At 7:15, we’ll call this meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge. Point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening and tuning in. It found to be an informative evening, but before we get into the crux of the matter related to town meeting warrant articles, we have some great business to take care of. First order of business is to proclaim Mystic Valley Elder Services’ 50th anniversary. We go to approve and issue a proclamation. Mr. Martin, if you would, it’s the honor of giving the proclamation. Actually, why don’t we make a motion first? Take a motion first, and then if we read the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proclamation and recognition of Mystic Valley Elder Services’ 50th anniversary.
Second. Before we read the proclamation, let’s talk a little bit about Mystic Valley Elder Services and what they do and have done and continue to do within the town of North Reading. For as long as I can remember, I mean, I remember my mother was on the political director’s say for probably twenty, thirty years, when she was starting the program here in North Reading, keep attention Mystic Valley Elder Services to assist the community in providing urgent vital services to our residents, our senior residents. Everything from getting given with the Meals on Wheels program, getting given with serving hot lunches up at the senior center, providing medical assistance, advice, income tax preparation, the list of services that this agency provides to citizens in North Reading and again the greater Boston area, greater Polina area, is phenomenal. And how they’ve been able to succeed for fifty years through all different types of economic upturns and downturns, they continue to plug along. It’s through assistance and support from community members. They have a terrific network of people and benefactors who also contribute to the financing of their operations, which is vital for the success, not just in the past, but moving forward. But we are eternally grateful for the services that they have provided over the last fifty years to the town of North Reading. And unfortunately, I’m going to be out of company. I think it’s on the twelfth when they’re having this event or the proclamation. And I would hope that if you were the representative for Elder Affairs, you could get the help and be there to make the presentation. But really, we can’t thank this organization enough for what they have done and for our community contribution to do. And I know Kelly here should be filling it out, a lot of the blanks as to what they do. But with that being said, any other comments from members of the board?
I just know that, you know, same thing you just expressed, that the partnership between the Elder Services and our council of aging has been, you know, without each other, it wouldn’t have been successful. Many people have been served. Meals on Wheels alone is just a significant contribution. So we should do everything we can to let them know we appreciate them and so that they can do it for another fifty years.
And every year, they have fundraisers events, which are, you know, comedy nights and other things. They get the theater and all of us, and we should continue to support them in every opportunity we have. So, Mr. Martin?
Mystic Valley Elder Services’ 50th anniversary proclamation. Whereas Mystic Valley Elder Services has provided five decades of dedicated service to older adults, individuals living with disabilities and their caregivers, enhancing lives and strengthening communities throughout North Reading and the surrounding region. And whereas MVES will commemorate this milestone
Get your little closer.
Will commemorate this milestone with a year-long celebration, beginning with an anniversary kickoff launch in June 2025, followed by local events across the eleven cities and towns and serbs, culminating in the MVES Legacy 50 Summit in June 2026. And whereas these events will honor the organization’s enduring mission, elevate its community partnerships, and celebrate its commitment to delivering vital information, programs, and services that uphold its dignity and independence of those it serves. And whereas Mystic Valley Elder Services continues to promote health, independence, and quality of life for older adults, adults with disabilities, and caregivers in communities including Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Metford, Melrose, North Reading, Reading, Revere, Stone, and Wakefield and Winthrop. And whereas MVES contains, sustains essential life-affirming programs that often extend beyond the reach of government funding, ensuring that every adult has the opportunity to live with dignity and autonomy. And whereas the town of North Reading is proud to host a celebratory event in partnership with the North Reading Council on Aging and the summer barbecue on June 12, 2025 at Aldersgate Church to 35 Park Street, North Reading. Now therefore, we, the North Reading Select Board, do hereby proclaim recognition and appreciation from Mystic Valley Elder Services on the occasion of its 50th anniversary and commend its unwavering service to our community.
The motion before us. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, absolutely unanimous. Congratulations to Mystic Valley Elder Services. I’d give a thank you for all this going on. If a member of the board could be present on the clock, that would be great, to make the presentation, so the time, check in with Janet.
Please, no time.
We have no time. Someone’s available, that would be terrific. So I guess we have to sign it?
Yep.
And then someone can deliver. That would be great. Oh, we didn’t have to do that. At some point, we’ll have to sign.
Yep.
Okay. You can pass it around.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the next item, we are aware that Mystic Louise, Louise, resident, one resident here in North Reading is, excuse me, the resident, I’m sorry, the resident here in North Reading is turning 100 years old. We do intend to have a proclamation to recognize her birthday, which is happening, has happened in the last few days. So we will have that detailed in our proclamation for the board to move back the next week.
Quick, congratulations to Louise on her 100th birthday. And we’ll be discussing that at the next meeting. We have the general requisite information. The next order of business is another proclamation for a person celebrating 100th birthday. Ethel Millis. Ethel has been a resident in North Reading since 1952. She has children here, some of them white with a school. And just to, Ethel and her husband, they got moved here in 1952. And whatever, five children, all of whose names begin with D, by the way. Haven’t got the story behind the D’s, but that’s okay. But she and Lloyd moved here in 1952 and raised their children, and as I said, some of them are on my age group. And just a wonderful respectable family who were part of the fabric of this community for seventy years almost. So it’s a long time. And again, good contributing members of the community, wonderful people, good friends and neighbors of so many, and we’re excited to celebrate her 100th birthday, which is on June 5. So with that, we’ll have a motion to proclaim and read the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proclamation and recognition of Ethel Millis’ 100th birthday.
Second. Second by Mr. Wallner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor proclaim.
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Unanimous. And if you would read the proclamation.
Whereas Ethel L. Miley Nigurts was born on June 5, 1925, in Everett, Massachusetts, where she was raised with the values of dedication, resilience, and compassion. And whereas on March 1, 1945, she married Lloyd Miley, a devoted husband and Army Air Force veteran, who served with honor in the Asian Pacific Theaters during World War II. And Ethel stands standing steadfastly by his side during their early years together in Texas. And whereas Ethel and Lloyd made their home in North Reading, Massachusetts, where they settled in 1952 and raised a loving family nurturing five children, David, Donna, Diane, Doreen, and Denise, with a revering love and guidance. And whereas Ethel served her community and country through her professional work, including a decade of service at the Internal Revenue Services in Endover, and many years as a skilled and respected legal secretary. And whereas she found joy in life’s simple pleasures, including memorable trips to Lake Monika Saki and annual fall foliage excursions with longtime friends, creating lasting memories filled with laughter and companionship. And whereas Ethel also enjoyed quiet moments of creativity and reflection, spending time knitting and reading, pastimes that brought her peace and fulfillment. And whereas her legacy of love and strength continues through her nine grandchildren and fourteen great-grandchildren, each testament of her enduring spirit and the values she instilled. And now therefore, we honor and celebrate the remarkable life of Ethel Millis, whose century of life has been marked by service, family, friendship, and grace. Her contributions to her family, her community, and her country shall never be forgotten. And we, the Select Board of North Reading, do hereby proclaim June 5, 2025, to be Ethel Millis’ Day, and urge all citizens of North Reading to join us in wishing Ethel a happy 100th birthday.
Congratulations, Ethel. And I think a family member, Tom Harris, will be picking it up?
I believe so, yes.
Next proclamation is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proclamation and recognition of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus month in North Reading.
Second. Second by Mr. Wallner. Any discussion?
I invite the, the pride parade’s going to be on June 22. It is the fifth year of doing this parade. It is a great community event. It’s, the parade starts at 12 o’clock, so you can line up. Everybody’s invited to join in. You line up around 11 o’clock, we take off and go around, very similar to what Memorial Day was, at 12 o’clock, and then we end up at the gazebo to have the celebration afterwards. Anybody who’s gone to it realizes it’s a great community celebration, and we should all embrace it and join in. It’s fun to do. Thank you. Again, Sunday, January, June 22.
And again, this is something that we’ve been doing now for five-plus years. I think it’s long overdue. I think it’s a wonderful proclamation that we do at an annual event, and I think it sends the right message for our community, to our community, that we’re welcoming community and accepting of all. And I think it’s important that we do this, and appreciate the board’s efforts in doing so. So we have a motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And I look forward to participating in the parade. I will be there.
Same.
Next to
I’m going to read the proclamation.
Yes. Next order of business is
Let’s forget it. Read the proclamation.
Yeah. Oh, I’m sorry. Read the proclamation.
Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation. Whereas we recognize June as Pride Month throughout the United States and the world, we’re reminded of what makes our community great, our remarkable capacity to accept and embrace the lives of others, regardless of our differences. In this regard, we stand together with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus communities to declare their pride and who they are and their love. The LGBTQ plus community has worked tirelessly for respect, equality, and the very right to exist. While there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQ plus community still face an unacceptable level of discrimination. We must push back against those who threaten LGBTQ plus people, and we must continue to make the case that all human beings are fundamentally common, always want love and to be loved. Therefore, be it resolved, we are proud to support our LGBTQ plus community’s right to live with their lives out loud. As we celebrate pride, we must continue to demand equal rights for all. Therefore, be it further resolved, the Select Board members do hereby proclaim June to be Pride Month for the LGBTQ plus community in North Reading. And therefore, be it further resolved, that we encourage all residents to celebrate our proud and diverse LGBTQ plus community through a parade, decorations, and moral support that reflects well on our town and support of our LGBTQ plus neighbors. And we recognize the LGBTQ plus residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods have made North Reading a vibrant community in which to live, work, and play.
Yeah, yeah. Well-proclaimed.
May I ask a favor? Could you all speak up into the microphones because we can’t, even the front row, we can’t hear anything.
I’m sorry.
We will attempt to do so. We will make that effort. Thank you.
That’s why you have microphones in front of you.
Yeah.
I’m sorry. I thought it was, is this the? Okay.
It being the time of 7:30, June 9, 2025, Spring Annual and Special Town Meeting Warrant Article Hearing. Town of North Reading, Notice of Informational Hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of North Reading and North Reading that in-person and virtual informational hearing on the following articles contained in the June 9, 2025 Town Meeting Warrant will be held Monday, June 2, 2025, 7:30 p.m., Town Hall, Room 14. The hearing may also be accessed virtually via phone and internet. This hearing will represent an opportunity for residents to learn more about the articles on the Town Meeting Warrant, to ask questions, and to engage in discussion in advance of the Spring Annual Town Meeting. A listing of warrant articles as follows, Articles 1 through 31. The hearing is held pursuant to Sections 18 to 25, Chapter 30A of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Open Meeting Law. Any interested citizen is welcome to virtually attend and participate in the hearing. Notice of explanation. It is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Select Board to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. This warrant article hearing is intended to represent an opportunity for extended discussion in advance of the Town Meeting. We sincerely hope that you will join us for this hearing on June 2, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. Vincenzo Studo, Chair, Stephen O’Larry, Vice Chair, Nicholas Massing, Clerk, Liam Gonzalez, and Richard Wallner. The hearing will represent an opportunity for residents to learn more about the articles on the Town Meeting Warrant, to ask questions and engage in discussion in advance of the special town meeting. A listing of the warrant articles as follows. Article 1, the acquisition and appropriation of 97 Main Street. This hearing is held pursuant to Sections 18 through 25 of Chapter 30A of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Open Meeting Law. Any interested citizen is welcome to virtually attend and participate in this hearing. Again, it is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Select Board to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. This warrant article hearing is intended to represent an opportunity for extended discussion in advance of the Town Meeting. We sincerely hope that you will join us for this hearing on June 2, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. Select Board Chairs, Stephen O’Larry, Richard Wallner, Vice Chair, Catherine Moore, Clerk, Vincenzo Studo, Nicholas Massing. That being said, at this particular point, we’re going to start off with the annual Town Meeting Warrants. We’ll be going in numerical order with the warrant articles. Articles 1, 2, and 3, citizens petition, which was signed by myself, as a member of the Select Board and a citizen petitioner, along with 20 other people. Those portions of the warrant hearing, Articles 1, 2, and 3, the Vice Chair, Mr. Wallner, will be chairing the meeting, and I will be participating as a member of the board, but also as the citizen’s petitioner. So with that, I’ll turn it over to Mr. Wallner.
Thank you for being here tonight. We have, so we’re going over Articles 1, 2, and 3. Both of the discussion is, can be contained largely within Article 1, that we spend most of our time this evening. We will start with presentations from the PA, Michael Deverdo. We will be followed up by Daniel McKnight, Town Planner, and then Seville Larry will then finish up. And we’ll also be taking comments from any committee or department people who are here before we open up the conference. So we’ll start with Michael, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay this evening. Great to see so many people here. We must have 45 people in the room and another 37 or 8 online, so that’s great. Really appreciate everybody’s coming out and participating in tonight’s hearing in advance of Town Meeting, which is one week from tonight at 7 o’clock at North Reading High School in the gym. This is the annual Spring Town Meeting PowerPoint presentation. We usually follow this form, for those of you who have been to a hearing before. It is a very similar document when we are in the room for the hearing itself. So I will begin just with something that I think most people are aware of, but maybe not everybody, which is that we have had a change in our bylaws that allow us to use electronic voting devices, or clickers, if you will, at Town Meetings. So that’s something that we will be utilizing at this upcoming Town Meeting. I know from talking with the moderator, it is his intention to very liberally rely on them and may in fact take every vote with them as a means to get everybody used to them. There will be a couple of test votes that we will take in the beginning. There’ll be yes or no questions, just to sort of test the system once everybody’s seated in the room, and then we’ll proceed with the business of Town Meeting. I’m not going to read the changes to the bylaw, but they basically, they authorize us to use this voting mechanism at Town Meeting. Just to clarify for everybody, everybody who’s a registered voter will get a randomly assigned voting device upon checking in. They rely on radio frequency, not the internet. If you do leave your seat for any reason, you’re going to be asked to return your clicker to the designated staff member, and it’ll be given back to you if you return. So thinking if anybody has to step out to the restroom, don’t be surprised if you’re asked to leave your device in the room. Just trying to make sure we keep track of all of them, make sure that they’re all accounted for. When Town Meeting is concluded, I think everyone’s familiar with being asked to turn in their ribbons, to Mrs. Fillmore. We’ll also be asked to turn in the clickers as well at the end of the evening, and appreciate everybody’s cooperation with that. Just a little bit of a note about how you’ll vote. Yes is green, or 1 with a letter A. No is 2, or red, or the letter B. And the device will look just like you see up there, and it will put in that little digital display to the right of the town seal, an indicator as to what your vote was as it was submitted to the vote. And the vote will actually be tallied up on the screen, so you will see, and the moderator will see the outcome of each vote digitally recorded. We purchased 1,000 of these when we went out for proposals in the fall, and based upon the feedback and based upon a desire to be prepared for a potentially even larger crowd, thanks to the work of the Finance Committee and a Reserve Fund Transfer, we’ve purchased another 500 that we expect to have on hand. So that would allow us to accommodate 1,500 voters. And for a point of reference, we certainly would love to have participation from every single registered voter in the town, which would be in the thousands, but the sort of high watermark that we saw looking back was the middle high school debt exclusion project. That was about 1,400 people. So we think 1,500 is the right number to be able to responsibly rely on these. We believe we can fit that occupancy level or very close to it in the gymnasium, and we do have an overflow room in one of the cafeterias as well. So, not to too far divert us, but just a word for everyone who is preparing for Town Meeting, that we will be using the clickers to vote at Town Meeting. Just a few important notes for folks. We talk about free cash. It’s not free money. It’s a funding source that we talk about that’s the undesignated fund balance from the previous year certified by the state is available. To put it more simply, it’s money that is left over from the previous year’s town budget, and that is a very important funding source for both our debt service and for capital projects. I’m not going to talk too far into Proposition 2 and 1/2, because that is not something that is contemplated on the warrant for this upcoming Town Meeting, but it is the state law that limits how much a city or town can increase property taxes per fiscal year. I’m not going to go through every single line on here, but just in transparency for folks, these are the balances of the many accounts that the town has. These are the major accounts, if you will. They are referred to at various points in the Town Warrant where transfers in or out of these accounts are being contemplated, but we do want to put them on there for folks to see. I am going to move right into the first articles, which are three citizens petitions to amend the zoning bylaws to establish a low road multifamily zoning overlay district. The articles were submitted by citizen petition. The Select Board voted on May 5 by a vote of 3 to 2 to recommend Articles 1, 2, and 3, which are all related to the so-called MBTA/3AA zoning. The Community Planning Commission, it says recommendation to be made at Town Meeting. I believe they voted to recommend at their last meeting two weeks ago. Am I correct? Excuse me. That was not able to be incorporated into the warrant based upon the timeline for needing to get it to the printer, but full disclosure, that vote was taken, I believe it was the 13th, a 13th? 20th? 20th, okay. 20th, that’s right. The Finance Committee did vote to recommend the articles as well, and that’s reflected in the warrant. As would be the custom, the motions for this article would be made by the petitioner. We do have a presentation that reflects a lot of information that has been presented in public meetings of the Select Board, the Planning Commission, and at Town Meeting to go through here this evening. It’s been abbreviated from the 35 odd slides that it started out as, but through you, Mr. Chairman, I’m going to ask the Town Planner if she could come up and go through, Mr. Vice Chairman, if we could ask the Town Planner to come up and go through. Daniel, I can actually click right on here to move the slides if you want to just refer directly to them. Can you see them on that screen as well?
I can.
Okay, great.
Does it make sense for a town plan to present for a citizen? Would this happen in any other scenario? It wasn’t a select board?
Do you want me to restart? Just making sure my mic works. Please. Sure. So I’m definitely happy to respond. So I did look back, and we had the special Town Meeting relative to the general bylaws for betterments. There was a presentation that was put up on the screen with regard to the warrant. So, I mean, again, the Select Board, the Planning Commission, whomever is able to certainly address Town Meeting, I think the Planner and I feel that there’s been a lot of conversation on this, and we feel it’s important to provide information based upon the work that we’ve done. We know there’s a lot of concern that folks have on all sides of this issue, and I think the purpose of the hearing is for those concerns to be heard. But I think the feeling, I’ll speak for myself, and I asked the Town Planner as well, is that we at least have the opportunity to go through the slides with regard to the information, at least as far as we know it, and then provide an opportunity for folks to discuss and/or debate it here or at Town Meeting.
Just curious, something to your question. Has there been a precedent, though, of a select board member, a town employee doing this for a citizen? I think the one you’re referencing, the citizen’s petition, spoke themselves, right? No?
They did speak, but we did also put slides up on the screen. The Select Board, 3 to 2, recommended this to the Town Meeting, and therefore, supported it. The Planning Commission, 4 to 1, recommended the Town Meeting to pass these articles. It’s incumbent upon the town officials and their employees to provide the necessary information to make an informed decision. So that’s why. The Board took a position, the majority of the Board took a position to support the articles. Supporting means informing the public, giving the information that’s available. All the work that’s been done on these particular articles has been done by the professional staff, not the citizen’s petitioners.
But this isn’t submitted by the professional staff?
No, it’s been supported, it’s been supported by It’s been supported by the Select Board, supported by the Planning Commission, supported by the Finance Committee. If you’re looking to deny access for information
You’ll find your way, Aaron.
If you’re looking to find
I just wanted to question
If you’re looking to deny access to information to the general public, stay it. Say it.
You tried that card back in October. That don’t work anymore.
That’s not going to work. Right on. Let’s move on. Yes, Sebastian.
The housing choice legislation was signed into law in January of 2021. Guidelines were issued in 2022. The Attorney General has confirmed communities are mandated to comply, and that happened in March of 2023. The new Section 3A of the General Laws, Chapter 40A, the Zoning Act, requires communities in the MBTA service area to allow multifamily zoning by right in a district of suitable size, density, and location. The state issued guidelines specifying the size, location, unit capacity, and density of the required districts for each town. The proposed district is 101 of Royal Road. The zoning district needs to be of at least 50 acres. This site is 80 acres. Allows multifamily housing by right. This is already allowed. Minimum gross density must be 15 units to the acre. Capacity in the zoning needs to allow for at least 750 units. The current permitted capacity is 908. The focus of the law is on what the zoning allows, not what would be built. There’s no production requirement and no infrastructure requirement. Land needs to be developable to count toward capacity calculation, as in it can’t be flood zone, water, wetlands, public lands, et cetera. Zoning can’t restrict age or number of bedrooms. The zoning doesn’t restrict Martin’s land. The zoning doesn't restrict Martin's Landing. This development is 55 and over by choice and would remain so as this is unrelated to zoning. Private properties that are rezoned remain in private ownership and under private control as they are now. 101 of Lowell Road, just as a comparison of what is currently permitted under their zoning versus what is proposed. A mix of four and five-story buildings is what is currently permitted. Proposed to be 4.5-story buildings by right, maximum of 60 feet, would remain the same. 900 units in this development are currently permitted and are under construction. 900 units are the number that this proposal caps development at. Currently, there is greater than 15% impervious surface. As the zoning is written, 15% or less impervious would be allowed as of right. This is because the site was given special permits to be allowed under the Aquifer Protection District to have more impervious surface than this zoning would allow. There's currently less than 85% open space for similar reasons. The Aquifer Protection District, in which this is located, has a limit of 15% impervious, which is interpreted in the calculations as being 85% open space. And that is, anything beyond that threshold would trigger a special permit, and therefore this zoning is written so that 85 or more, 85% or more open space is a requirement. An explanation of the unit capacity requirement. The state requires a so-called unit capacity for the district of 750 units. This does not mean 750 units would be added to the existing district. The state requires us to go through a model calculation to see what a total future development could yield under as-of-right zoning. This figure is an estimate based on formulas provided by the state. Under the proposed zoning, the expected yield for future development would be similar or less than what is currently existing under construction, which is 908 units. There's no expectation, nor would there be room in the proposed district for an additional 750 units. The proposed by right zoning would not allow this. Calculations include 85% open space on the site, as I mentioned, due to the Aquifer Protection District limitations on impervious surface. The subject properties are currently in underlying zoning district of industrial office, and currently do have a multifamily overlay zoning district on them. There are numerous possible uses allowed as of right by the current zoning, including office, retail, and manufacturing. Town meeting can rezone a property an unlimited number of times. Zoning does not change ownership or control of sites, and site plan review by the Community Planning Commission would still be done on new or changed buildings in the same manner as now. Incorporating a new district with the same provisions, but with a maximum number raised from four stories to four and a half would be a majority vote. The 60-foot maximum, as we mentioned, would remain. This is just a note review of the amendments. Site plan review, language, would just, this is a clarification that our site plan review is not a true special permit. It behaves on a special permit. It has a procedure of a special permit, but it is not an actual discretionary use special permit. And this would be a change to our, the wording of our description of what a site plan review permit is in our bylaw. There would be no change to the procedure. This would just be done to meet the state requirements. And the third amendment is an updated date of the zoning map, only if the first change is made, and the Articles Two and Three are two-thirds votes where Article One is majority Just a summary of the information we have been given about noncompliance. This is from the Mass Municipal Association from February of '24. The Attorney General issued an advisory in March of '23 that compliance was mandated. The town, if it becomes noncompliant, loses eligibility for new funding from Mass Works Infrastructure Funding, Housing Choice, Planning Capital Projects, the local capital projects fund, which supports housing authorities. Compliance is considered when the state is evaluating the following grants that are listed here, and may also influence funding decisions made by EOED, EOHLC, the MBTA, and other state agencies that consider local housing policies. And this means there have been, you know, a number of agencies, as we've seen recently, that have made this compliance a requirement of their grant programs. They have the discretion to do that in many cases. The effective noncompliance on grant funds to North Reading. Previously received grant funds from programs for which the town would no longer be eligible is just a summary of the amount of money we have received from Mass Works. $3 million for water system upgrades and $200,000 for sewer design permitting. These are past grants. This is a grant program that the left towns and, you know, rely on for infrastructure funding that we would no longer be considered for.
Excuse me, Danielle. Sorry, so what years did we receive these grants?
2018, I believe.
Eighteen through 20, eighteen through 21, because it was a phase, and it happened, it happened when we were building.
Yeah, I believe we were awarded in 2018 for $3 million. The $200,000 was a wastewater grant, and I believe that was 2022.
Yes. So, for like, the last, just take it like 10 years back. That's, that's the money we've got over the last 10 years?
From the Mass Works.
From Mass Works.
From Mass Works. There are other previously received grant funds from programs for which 3A compliance is considered, including the Mass Downtown Initiative. We've previously received $10,000 for Main Street conceptual design, the Municipal Vulnerability Program, $16,000 for a MFP planning grant. I have been trying to figure out what our housing authority receives from the local project capital funds. We don't know this enough. It may vary for mere a year, but I keep not being able to find out.
Mr. Chairman? The MFP grant, North Reading voted, known to be a part of that organization, right? So we wouldn't be eligible for that grant anyways?
We are not eligible for that grant this year.
Excellent, thank you.
So effective noncompliance on grant from North Reading. Future potential grant funds from the following for which North Reading is otherwise eligible are Mass Works, and these are just, I put the maximum amount of award that can be made within each of these grant categories. These are all grants for which North Reading currently is eligible for. Mass Works, Housing Choice, Community Planning Grants, Mass Downtown Initiative, Ground Field Through Development, Site Readiness, Underutilized Properties, Collaborative Workplace, Commonwealth Places Programs, Land Use Planning Grants, and Land Grants. The above funds do not exclude North Reading for income or low poverty rates. 3A impacted grants for which North Reading would not be eligible for reasons unrelated to 3A are MFP, as we just mentioned, Urban Agenda, and the Rural and Small Town Development There are many other state grant programs that have begun requiring compliance with 3A. Future of access to grants is difficult to predict. The town regularly relies on a variety of funding programs that may or may not be affected. The town currently is receiving funds from the following state grants. We have no way of knowing in the future whether these may become grant programs that will impose eligibility requirements or not, but this is just a summary of what we're receiving currently from state grants.
Which is 990,000.
There are other state grant programs that have begun requiring compliance with 3A that are not mentioned elsewhere in this presentation or specifically from the state. This future access is going to be difficult to predict for us, and, yeah, I think I did that one already.
Danielle, is that all from that 990 grant? What years that was from?
I don't know.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just looking, just looking at this, I believe these are all within this current fiscal year, or perhaps one fiscal year in arrears, but I believe these are all within the past two fiscal years. Looking, you know, the equipment grant, I think generally is coming in at about that number. The cultural council grant is generally annually that number. Chapter 90 is generally annually 515,000. Library aid is annually about 36,000. Council on Aging Formula Grant, I believe that fluctuates a bit more. The fire safety grant is generally annually around $5,000. The senior program for fire safety, generally a few thousand dollars. The police fire E911 support has annually been upwards of $40,000. The EMD coordination, similarly. Training for 911, I believe, has been between $1,500,000 and $1,900,000. Extended polling reimbursement has now become an annual reimbursement, I believe. The body worn camera, the 148,000, that was a one-time grant that allowed us to outfit the apartment, but that was, I believe, paid off in this current fiscal year looking at the Finance Director. The First Responder Wellness Grant, fortunately has been, it's a smaller grant, but it's come in, I think, over the past two years at least.
$25,000 per year.
Per year, yes. And then the earmark for the CIT, we received that for a number of years. Then we didn't receive it for a few years, and now we've received it again this current fiscal year. So many, if not all of these are, most of these are.
And all of these are at risk if we vote against that vote?
I am aware that the state administration has come out and said that the fire department equipment grant would not be conditioned on that. The others, I think, were just highlighting that there are a number of grant funds that could be at risk.
I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to include a grant that we all know is still coming regardless of what this vote is, and I would hope the town administration would agree.
I think I would just respond by saying that my understanding is it was an attempt in the legislature to specifically exempt it from the program, but I think it failed.
It did fail.
So, that's why.
So what we've been told is the formula grants will likely.
Speak up as loud as you can.
The formula grants will likely stay in place, but it's discretionary grants that we could run risk. Right now, we received a $134,000 grant to upgrade the website and documented visualization that is dependent upon the MBTA. That's supposed to be the current through 2026, but we held it because we don't know what's going to happen at the town meeting. In addition, we had a $55,000 grant to upgrade all the ADA door access for the library and town hall.
We're all set for that.
Yeah, the grant was contingent on, and we were in that middle compliance, only because we were in the middle of compliance. If we hadn't done that, we would have lost that grant.
Just some of the frequently discussed items and concerns over the last couple of years that we've been talking about this issue. We've been advised by town council and the state that the zoning bylaw would not affect the existing 55-plus age restriction at Martin's Landing. No units will be required to be built. The proposed unit would make it permissible to build additional height, but this decision would rest with owners. The zoning bylaw does not give the state special authority over the parcels within it. This bylaw will not bring MBTA service to North Reading. The following limitations would remain on development on these parcels. Property owner rights, wastewater treatment capacity, state building code, the local Aquifer Protection District, existing wetlands and flood zone, and the 4DR overlay zoning on the Edgewood Apartments would all remain in place. The proposed zoning would allow for additional stories, but also caps the total number of units to what is already permitted, and therefore no net new units could be built under this as proposed. The question of could units potentially be added to the existing buildings? And no, not with the proposed cap of 908 units in place. If the cap is not approved by the state or the Attorney General's Office, then based on existing building footprints, an estimated potential of 24 units at Martin's Landing could be added, and an estimated 204 units at Edgewood. This would require adding floors to buildings and/or reconstructing buildings to the extent possible, and at Edgewood, it would mean adding elevators. The reason for the selection of these parcels, these parcels were identified in '23 and '24 because they've already been recently developed as multifamily, reflecting the town's prior actions to provide affordable and senior housing options. Redevelopment is believed to be unlikely for the foreseeable future due to the age and density of existing construction, the cost of reconstruction, and approving Articles One to Three would modify the existing zoning to comply with what is now state law. What was the outcome of the lawsuit challenging 3A? The state attorney general sued the town of Milton to require the town to approve a compliance zone. The court affirmed that the law is valid and the state may take action to require compliance. The allowance of age restriction from the multifamily zoning requirements for MBT communities, these are regulations issued in January of this year. As far as determining suitability for families with children, quote, "EOHLC will deem a multifamily zoning district to comply with these requirements as long as the zoning does not require multifamily uses to include unit with age restrictions, and does not limit or restrict the size of units, cap the number of bedrooms, size of bedrooms, or the number of occupants, or impose a minimum age of occupants." These are items that cannot be required by the zoning. They say nothing about what the private owners may do. As recently as June 2nd today, EOHLC and the Attorney General's Office have indicated that the language expressly allowing 55-plus age restriction in the zoning district, quote, "does not conflict with Chapter 40A, Section 3A, and thus would not be vulnerable to disapproval on that basis," as has been noted to us by town council.
Just confirming, we have that in writing from the EOHLC?
From town council, having conversed with EOHLC.
Is there any chance we can get that in writing from the EOHLC? I personally think it would change a lot of what I think about this, but I don't want a town council in my opinion thing again. I want a.
In conversation with the EOHLC, and also in my email correspondence, my casual correspondence with EOHLC, they have indicated that they agreed with town council. They're not going to give us, you know, an affidavit or a certification in advance of that, but they have indicated to us that they agree with town council. Normally, a state agency will tell us to rely on town council's opinion for any kind of legal matter. They've told us they agree, but, and they, I do have an email that says that they agree, but it's not a, if you want to call it an official legal document. I don't know how, or really to characterize it, they have indicated that they agree with our town council's opinions.
Through you, Mr. Vice Chairman, I think that concludes the presentation, which really addressed Articles One, Two, and Three, so I'll turn it over to you for either board member comment or for public comment at this hearing.
I'll start with the board members first.
Oh, sorry. Just, I think it's a court.
I would just ask through you, Mr. Vice Chairman, to anybody from the public who's speaking, if they could just give their name and their residential address for the record.
I'm Steve O'Leary, Select Board Member of the 15 Me Road, and lead signature on the citizen's petitions. First of all, the genesis of the citizen's petition was brought about because we had a situation where the general public, town meeting, may not have had an opportunity to come into compliance with the MBTA law if an article was not presented to them at town meetings. So lots changed since last October. Last October, there were some legitimate questions in relation to the legality of the law. There was a pending suit. The opponents, the people who were skeptical of the need to comply with the law, indicated that they thought it was important that town meeting wait. Wait until they get a decision from the State Supreme Court, which is the highest court of Commonwealth, to adjudicate whether or not the law was constitutional. We were supposed to comply by December 31st. The Supreme Judicial Court issued their ruling the first week of January, so obviously that was held in abeyance as far as the compliance. They did conclude unanimously that the law is constitutional, and it is the law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it needs to be complied with. That was in January. They also concluded that Executive Office of Housing and Livelihood Communities had erred in the way that they promulgated the rules and regulations and said that, you know, you can't do, you can't implement the law until those rules and regulations are appropriately put out. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts immediately took immediate action, issued some emergency regulations, extended the deadline for compliance until July, I think, 13th, 12th, 13th, and the rules and regulations have been promulgated in the appropriate manner with the appropriate public hearings along the way. So the bottom line is from last October to now, there's been a huge significant change. The constitutionality of this law has been verified unanimously by the State Supreme Court. There's no appeal of it. There's no more decision-making about it. It is the law. We also heard from the Attorney General at the time that it is her intention to force compliance on the communities, to come into compliance, in the way to force the compliance again. And the way to force the compliance again is to sue the communities that are not in compliance by the deadline of July and force us to defend the indefensible, obviously, wasting the taxpayers' money to defend a position that has already been adjudicated. In addition to that, the concern that some people had in relation to giving up our home rule, so to speak, gets more exacerbated if we don't comply. Right now, this law provides us with an opportunity to choose where this overlay district is going to be. The town of North Reading gets to choose where the overlay district is going to be. If we do not comply, and again, it's a case that we can't quit, the courts will decide either through a decision that a third party master appointed by them to come into our community and determine where this district overlay district will be. I can guarantee you, there'll be more dissatisfied people then than there is now. There were legitimate concerns raised last, last year. If you call out, the first time we made an attempt at this was last June, and the major concern was, other than the constitutionality of the law, was the general sense of everybody in that room, the town meeting, was there was a concern for the over fifty five restriction, age restriction at Martin's Landing. Everybody in this community was concerned. I don't know of one member of the select board, the planning commission, the finance committee, the town planner, the town administrator, your state rep, your state senator, the state auditor, who was here at the town just a couple of weeks ago, who would be advocating for sponsoring or putting forth a proposal that would do away with the over fifty five restriction at Martin's Landing. I never would support it, never have supported it, and will not support any article or any proposal or program that would impede or take away that fifty five plus restriction. Nobody on either side of the issue. But it's one thing we're united about. There's been an awful lot of information provided, some of it truthful, some of it untruthful. And a lot of people and a lot of angst has been caused to the people at Martin's Landing unnecessarily and unfairly as far as providing information to them or denying them information to get the facts. The facts are clear. The law needs to be complied with. It is a mandate. The state auditor was here at the invitation of a small group of people here last week in hopes, I think their hope was, the message that she delivered wasn't one they wanted to deliver. She just issued a ruling back in February, I believe, through the division of local mandates. This is an unfunded mandate. The communities have the opportunity to sue to get the funds that they're required to come into compliance with the zoning, not what are the impact of it's going to be in the future. She stated that it was totally unrelated to the law. She stated the law is the law, it's been determined by the Supreme Court of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the communities must comply with it. It is a mandate that needs to be complied with. She said, quote, "It is not a get out of jail free card for any community. You have to comply." So here we are in a situation where we had nothing, we had no opportunity to come into compliance, so I put forth the citizens petition. Last year, the planning commission didn't support it. The select board did on a three to two vote. Town meeting opted not to do it, got to, got to move forward and wait for the Supreme Court to make their decision. All that has occurred. At the end of January, beginning of February, this board and the administration was forced to sign an action plan, notify the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that we were going to put forth for consideration, an action plan and a compliance plan for the town of North Reading to come into compliance by the July deadline. The planning commission at the time, on a four to one vote, said that they had no intention of offering or endorsing the action plan at this point, and that it was the prerogative of the board to do so. The prerogative of this board on a three to two vote was to have the town administrator sign an action plan and submit it. That action plan is this plan, because that's all we had, was this plan. But at the same time, the planning commission did offer to have public hearings moving forward over the next two or three months on other ideas while not submitting a plan, which was helpful and good and appreciated. Since that time, the planning commission looked at other proposals. How else could we come into compliance? And they had good vetted discussions about it. They landed on one, which is basically down at the quarter sixty two and then Route twenty eight down by Kitty's and Winter Street, that potentially that's an area that we could take Martin's Landing out of this proposal and add these other, other parcels of land to come into compliance. While looking at it further, the impact on the community from an economic standpoint didn't make sense, because if we're going to take good commercial property for future economic development, and we're looking for new growth here, and allowing by right additional housing units, which generally brings on more cost to the town, they didn't want to forego the opportunity of losing their commercial property. So it was a wise decision, because what's being proposed here doesn't change anything. The current uses remain. The current property owner's rights remain. Nothing changes. The over fifty five is protected. And as recently as today, town council has been consulting with the attorney general's office and the executive office of housing and community living, livable communities, whatever it is, and they have concurred that the language that has been included, and this is important too, that the difference between October's proposals and this's proposal is just two changes. One is I inserted the fifty five plus right of property owners to restrict their property if they so choose by right. And the second one is limiting the total number of units that are available for development there at nine hundred eight, which is the current number of units. What those two things do is it secures the rights and memorializes them in writing in your bylaws for the fifty five plus, can't be undone, the state isn't going to overrule it, they've already indicated that they're going to approve it. And the nine hundred eight means that there isn't going to be any more units that are currently there. Nobody's going to come in, as you were told, the developers are going to come in and buy these units up at Martin's Landing, do away with your fifty five plus restriction, subdivide your units and add, and bring families in. Can't happen, won't happen, isn't going to happen. There's not going to be a bus stop near the end of Martin's Landing where families are going to be dropped off, you know, there's going to be no transportation. It has nothing to do with the MBTA service. You know, so all this information and concerns that people have brought up, you know, are legitimate concerns based upon the information they were fed. And I think it's unfortunate that a lot of misinformation and a lot of information is not being allowed to be promulgated, particularly with the Martin's Landing community there, because there's a controlled Facebook page here, where the administrator of that Facebook page is not allowing information to be disseminated. That's unfortunate. You know, if we're looking to get this thing completed and have everybody be satisfied as best we can, you know, looking back to when this was promulgated and put in here, nobody was happy with what's been promulgated by the state. Nobody's been happy, including myself. I was the most vocal critic at the time when we found out what occurred, but that doesn't change the fact that it's the law and we have to comply with it. Now we have to make the best of it. And the best of it is leave the choice of where it's going to happen here. This proposal, again, no more units, no more building, no age restriction is going to be lifted on, on, on Martin's Landing. You have to look at where the information is being disseminated from and who do you Three members of the select board, now four members of the select board, four members of the planning commission, entire finance committee, your state representative and your state senator, who have, who have come to this meeting here and said, you know, we can't change the law. You're going to have to comply. You can't change the law. And they have offered some very reasonable amendments in the last session here, in the last two or three months during the budgetary season, to allow for certain give backs or, you know, little easing of the thing, and they've been soundly defeated, like twenty seven votes in favor, a hundred and sixty four opposed. And that's how it's been falling all the way along, including the public safety funds grant money, where Representative Jones was trying to make that as part of the budget, that it wouldn't be restricted if you weren't in compliance with the MBTA law. Twenty seven votes in favor, a hundred and sixty four opposed. That's how it's going. They were told, and they sat here and they told us, for the next two sessions, there aren't going to be amendments to this law. We're going to implement it and see how it goes, and then we'll talk about it. Well, two sessions is four years. So why are we going to spend the taxpayers' money defending the indefensible? Why are we going to spend the taxpayers' money and lose? Why are we going to forego state grants, which is being utilized and funded by our state tax dollars, and not allow it to come into this community because we're in noncompliance? Why would we do that? For people who are fiscally responsible and care about how we're going to balance our budget here, these grant monies that we get provide very vital services and programming as well as infrastructure. All of it needs to be done and paid for. It's either going to be paid for by our tax dollars through our budgetary process or through the grant monies from the state. If we don't get the grant monies from the state, these projects still need to be done. These services still need to be provided, and our resources are finite, very small, right? So as we have to pick up the state grant money that's lost, something else has to give. That's people. Those are jobs. Those are programs, you know, services that we currently enjoy, that we have to do to get ADA compliant in the senior center and the library, you know, or others, even the smallest of grants. Getting fifty thousand dollars somewhere out of our budget is very difficult. So the question is, you know, who are you going to trust? The information you're receiving has been uniformly the same for the majority of the board, the majority now of the, of the planning commission, you know, the finance committee, town council. They don't always give me the advice that I want to hear, but they give you good advice. They've been spot on. They've been absolutely accurate in what they predicted is what, what the SJC was going to do and how the state would look at what we're going to be complying with. So what's before you at town meeting, these three articles are all conforming with state law, are going to be approved by the attorney general's office, gets us into compliance with the state law, renders us eligible for state grants, and gets us off our back. Someone said in the newspaper this week, you know, we need to stop the nonsense. That's about the only thing I've ever agreed with the guy on. I agree. Stop the nonsense. Stop the misleading of people. Provide the people with an opportunity to come into compliance and give them the truth. And it's a pretty simple, it's not that complicated. The biggest concern, again, the over fifty five has been resolved. The number of units and density changes in the neighborhood, that's been resolved. We are very, in a unique position here in North Reading, where we can come into compliance and have little or no impact, and provide the planning commission now with an opportunity to take a measured approach as far as how we're going to help out meeting the housing needs of our greater, greater regional area, rather than being forced to do it by somebody else and a disinterested third party coming in and telling us where it's going to be. So if you want home rule, you want to say where, you want to have a say as to where it's going to happen, this is your opportunity. If you want to forego that, forego the money, then vote no. So I would urge everybody, again, stop the nonsense, get on board, let's get together. You know, this has divided our community far too often for unnecessary reasons. We have, you know, some members of the community saying, you know, Martin's Landing is over here, we're over there. Well, no, we're one community. We need to do what's in our best interest. This is what's in our best interest. Thank you. And I'll answer any questions if there are.
Okay. I'm going to first, before we go to public comment, I'd just like to invite anybody from the finance committee or the CPC who would like to speak. You're welcome to come forward.
Warren.
Warren, please. Let's go ahead to the other. This is Warren Pierce, the chair of the CPC.
One of the things that gets overlooked on this is when we, it wasn't just the fact that we wanted to hold on to the commercial property, but if you were to build all of these housing in that, in that area, besides losing the commercial property, you end up needing another fire truck, or a fireman, or policeman, or police, you know, all kinds of support services that we don't necessarily have the money for, and it's a losing proposition. And the beauty of this is that it, that it doesn't change anything. It leaves everything very much the same. And after looking at the whole thing, I mean, we, we spent a lot of time on this, and we took a couple of votes where we voted no because we didn't want to make a decision until we were sure we knew everything there was to know about it, and when we did, we had a four to one vote in favor of it. So I think that's where we, where we stand, and I'll answer any questions for us as well.
Thank you. Anybody else?
The finance committee has been studying the MBTA article.
Can you, I'll just put the microphone a little closer to you, sorry. Thank you. Have a good one.
The finance committee has been paying attention and going to hearings and discussing this article, and we really have come to the conclusion, and in fact, we have had this conclusion for quite a while, and that is, just as Mr. O'Leary said, it doesn't make much sense to put this town in the position where they could incur greater costs, and this particular way of handling it is, we're very fortunate in North Reading. There are a lot of towns that are scrambling to try and find areas that are suitable and will meet the state's criteria. We've already got an established, built up area that meets all the criteria, that does not add to the school system or public safety, and the finance committee is very much in favor of moving forward, and we voted unanimously to support it.
Thank you. Before I open up for public comment from my board, who would like to start? The gentleman, go to start first. So from mid two thousand twenty three up until two weeks ago, I've repeated the same thing like a parrot. Me in a microphone? Okay. So after eighteen months of repeating the same thing, I'm not going to do it again. It's on YouTube. Thank you.
You two meaning them? Yeah, okay.
Well, I'll paraphrase what he would say, is that fighting the state is a losing battle. We've tried it before, it doesn't work. It's law, we have to comply. Paraphrase any word the gentleman would say. Yeah?
Fighting the state is a losing battle. The law's been upheld, the law's the law, and I think the way we, the current proposal, I think, makes a lot of sense, knowing what the budget looks like. There's no money in the budget to A, fight the lawsuit for not going to win, and B, lose the grants that we dearly need to keep going. Like, if you look at all the grants we could lose that are annual, that are recurring, it, it's not chum change. Like, ten grand to the senior center would make a big difference. I mean, I, I, I don't want to repeat what has been said. I think we should approve it, and I think we should apply for every weekend possible to qualify for.
Thank you. Mr. Massey?
I think I've made clear a few people that the MBTA is certainly not my hill to die on. I have changed some of my opinion over time. The one thing I wanted to get off, you know, I was, I was close to supporting it if it wasn't Martin's Landing, and I still feel like the fact that those people feel burdened wants me to want to help them. So to that, I don't want to be the one to vote on something that could remove grants from our community either, but, you know, Steve's talking about trust, he mentions trust a few times, about four to ones, well, I'm the one, so failure shot at me, so I'll, I'll answer that the best I can. Trust, well, if you step out of your rock of North Reading, the entire Wilmington, right next door, the entire town of Wilmington, their select board voted unanimously not to support this, this law. So just right next door, you got unanimous decision by five elected members to not want this. So say, oh, Nick doesn't want the MBTA, Nick doesn't want grants, CPC doesn't want this. There are so many people outside of this town that have differing opinions than you, and you need to understand that that's healthy, you know? People, people outside of this town, outside of this rock are voting no, and they're voting no unanimously. So if I was a stone throw way over Wilmington, I'd actually be with the majority. There are seventeen grants shown here. We've gone over this since back when June, when Danielle and Warren were standing in the podium. Podium was actually around here, they were standing here, and we talked about how the seventeen grants weren't applicable to North Reading, right? We've learned that since then, so I think still showing the seventeen grants isn't disingenuous. You know, Steve had a thirty four minute speech at the CPC. You know, Steve had a thirty-four minute speech at the CPC meeting. God bless the chair. But he mentioned that he had Town Council, he had to get Town Council's opinion, but then he's speaking as a citizen. So, you know, for anyone here, if you'd like to get Town Council opinion on anything you like, you're a citizen, you are now welcome to. So again, Mr. O'Leary, you love to set precedents. Thank you. He also mentioned that he had the Town Administrator send the CPC's info on the MBTA. Again, I don't know if our Town Administrator is working for citizens that way, that again is questionable to me. All these slides and not one thing, I, listen, I'm a man of facts. I will, I will read and I will listen, and I wrote down everything he said, and I have a response to it. These slides here have a lot of information. Thank you, Danielle. The one thing you failed to put in there was about the unfunded mandate by the state auditor. So that's not in there for an interesting reason. With that, the state auditor was asking where our financial impact statement was, and I'd be interested in the same thing. Why not take a shot and submit a financial impact statement to the state? Why not take a shot at free money, right? If there, if it's an unfunded mandate and they want to fund us, throw it all in. You heard me before here say, throw the box of pencils and the erasers in too. Prorate them and put it in. Try and get as much money as you can out of that unfunded mandate. Mr. O'Leary somehow getting the Town Administrator and our Town Planner to present for a citizen, I still think is extremely inappropriate. We do have an Ethics Commission pending issue where Mr. O'Leary has voted on his own article, so that three to two vote, if Mr. O'Leary was not able to vote, it would be a two to two vote, which would be a failing vote. So just keep in mind that. Defending the indefensible was something that Mr. O'Leary mentioned. Has any town been sued yet by the state?
No, they're not on a compliance until July.
Oh, all right. Okay. So I know there was two, I mentioned the transcript, but it's the address that already said that towns have already been sued. So it's not, you know, just want to correct the information for the public, right? People are throwing out some, some things that the state has already sued towns, and I just want to correct that. No one has been sued yet.
They sued Milton.
As a matter of fact, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Leary, this is a Select Board times to speak. You know, you've mentioned defending the indefensible, and, you know, lawyer fees, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. O'Leary is in favor of lawyer fees for other reasons, right? If we want to purchase a property on the industry, we want to take it by a certain way, Mr. O'Leary is in favor of the repercussions of taking it that way and the legal losses that may come with it. So he's willing to pick and choose which legal expenses he wants to take. I do want to mention, Steve.
I hope you didn't, I'd ask that you just stated the MBTA, stated the focus of the agenda tonight, MBTA and the law.
This is all MBTA, yeah, it was just, I'm responding to a citizen. Steve referenced that KP Law is accurate. They are accurate, they're a reputable law firm. But what you don't know is that the town of Hamilton, no, not citizens, not a group of citizens, the town of Hamilton has sued the state over this MBTA law. KP Law is the town council. So KP Law certainly speaks out of both sides of their mouth with regards to different stances of yes and no. They will defend the no as well, and I just want people to keep that in mind. And lastly, I wrote something about comply because I kept just hearing comply, 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 which reminded me of COVID, and as we know, recently, the United States CDC will no longer recommend COVID shots for children in pregnant women, which they had before.
Again, you're going on track. Please stay on track. Please stay within the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
I will say, though, that every single law firm in America, and I wish I got the rate that KP Law charges the town because, let's just say, my firm's legal bills are much greater, they take both sides of the argument. That's what they do.
Okay. No, that's. Point that out, point that out. There's two different arguments. The town council who's guiding us is also guiding other towns down.
Because that, because each town is going to ask how to proceed and advise. I'm just stating that, that that's how law firms work.
Yeah.
But they do.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arthur.
All interesting points, but what are you getting at? Like, do you want to comply with this or not? Like, in all practical purposes?
Well, actually, no, I'm, no, I'm just.
So ask your question, and I'll be in touch.
Oh, you're the worst, Chair.
We're going to have these articles next Monday. People are going to be asked to vote. Do you recommend that the people vote to comply with the law? Or do you think we should go, let's see what happens? Maybe we get sued, maybe we don't get sued? I think it's kind of irresponsible to play with the town budget. The budget is really thin. We really don't have the free cash to plug all these holes. We really don't.
No, no. No. Very fresh.
If you're going to recommend that we don't come into compliance, the state will make us come into compliance.
That's correct.
The law may be unfunded, which is not to say we shouldn't follow it regardless. We're not asking, we're not being cast to build anything, we're not asking, we're not being cast to spend taxpayers' money to come into compliance. We have to change some zoning language. We're protecting the residents that have legitimate concerns about their property. That's now been resolved and addressed. I think, you know, if you don't believe the correspondence between KP Law and AG's office, perhaps we can go back to them and get more details, I'm sure we could. But what's the point of going back and forth over the conversations we've had? The law is the law. If we don't come to compliance the way we proposing to, they're going to come, they're going to make us come into compliance. We're going to spend more time, more energy, and more money arguing about it. Like, what's the net result? Where does it get us?
Okay, thank you.
Good. May I reply? So you asked me what my stance was. We already took that vote, so that's all said. You don't understand. Don't.
I wasn't, I wasn't there when you voted because that was before I got elected.
Yeah, you got the packet, you're looking at the screen, it says three to. You don't.
And you haven't changed your mind?
No, I haven't.
But we have new information.
I'm going to, I'm going to stand up to the people of Martin's Landing period. So that's that. Listen, you're trying to make me out to seem like a bad person? That's terrible.
No, I'm just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm just wrapping up real quick.
I'm confused about why we're going back over it.
Good. Stop. Throw me.
You mentioned back and forth.
No, don't throw me. To me, you're talking to me.
She was just talking to me.
I know. But you, I understand, and that is what I'm saying. I'm the first time doing this, so please deliver your message.
So anyways, Mr. Chair, through you, I, you're, I don't even know what you asked, Ms. Noren, but to be honest with you, there's a million other people out there that don't like this law, so to try and single me out like I'm on an island, it doesn't work.
Thank you. Okay, so anybody else from the committee's apartments? Okay, so we're going to, oh, please.
Don Kelleher, three stands per lane. I think this boils down to two things. One, microphone?
Yeah, please.
One is the facts, and the other is opinion or wanting to, to not comply with the law because you don't like it. And in the state, we've been through that many times. The seatbelt law back in the sixties, the bottle bill law, that there're in, there're good reasons for them. This housing law, there is good reason for it. There's a lot of housing that is needed in this state, and I don't think anybody would deny that. So it's a philosophical difference about it. That's one thing. But it's a facts difference. I think the facts have been explained, and your philosophical differences, you know, you got to comply with the law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. We'll open up for public comment. Please.
Good evening. Robert Atkinson Jr., eighty-two Elm Street. I only want to add that I don't like this law. I hate it, in fact. I think, I think we can agree, it is a terrible law. But the sad fact of the matter is, with like six or seven Republican senators against a, you know, however many Democrats are on Beacon Hill, and about fourteen or maybe twenty Republican House members, we've got veto-proof majorities in both houses by the Democratic, the Democratic socialists want this, they've got veto-proof majorities in both houses.
Let's stay on point.
Well, I'm getting there. They passed this law. The governor's a Democrat, she signed this law. We're stuck with it. I don't like it. I don't think it's the right law, but the Supreme Court has ruled, we're stuck with it. So we either go on a fool's errand, fight it, and then lose and spend a lot of money and time and effort in the process, or we just, you know, as others have pointed out, we simply pass these articles. I don't like them, but, you know, it's the best in a bad set of choices. We either pass this and control where we place this district that they're forcing on us, or we don't and let them pick someplace that's far less suitable and even less pleasant for the citizens of North Reading. I don't, you know, again, I don't like it, I don't want it, but given the bad choices we're being offered, they're holding, the state is holding a gun to our head. We either stand there and do what they say, or they call the Troy Gray, put a bullet in our head. That's the choice we're being offered. I don't like it. I don't like having, being threatened by bureaucrats and politicians on Beacon Hill, but that's the situation we're at. We either deal with it or we ignore it. And I suggest that we deal with it.
Thank you very much. I think if we were to take a vote on how many people like this, I think we'd have a decent vote. I think we can all agree to that. Just.
We need, there needs to be a correction. This is not a law that our current governor dreamt up on a bad day. This is a law that was actually signed for by Charlie Baker.
People should hear this, please. Please come forward.
This is, I think we need to correct the record a little bit. This is not a law that was signed, that was brought about or dreamt up by our current governor. This was, in fact, a law that came into fruition many years ago and was signed for by Charlie Baker.
Thank you. I'm going to go break your address, please. I got to name and address, please.
Rich Fowles on thirty-nine Elm Street. Just a comment kind of on the process. I heard Mr. Massey starting to change a little bit and open up to the idea, and then he felt somewhat kind of ganged up on or attacked, or like he was being misconstrued and put as a bad person, which I didn't, I didn't hear that, but I can understand. He is a man of fact, a respectable man. He has a lot of influence, and he wants to help the people of Martin's Landing. And I hope he will do that by correcting the misinformation that those folks have heard about the impact of this, and tell the truth, and get emotion and personal feelings out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, come forward, please.
My name is Jim Gannon. I live at nine Duane Drive. I was surprised by the piece that Danielle showed about the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Surprised only in that I didn't realize they had sent it to anybody other than me, which they did a month ago.
Could you please direct your comments?
Thank, sorry. You're absolutely correct. In the email, which I will share, that I got from our two legislators and questions that they posed to this commission by me, their last two, last two lines, sentences, excuse me, were, "The three-eight district doesn't invalidate or change existing legal uses, especially if allowed by the underlying zoning district or an existing permit." Last one, "Nor can a zoning bylaw amendment overrule or negate an existing private use regulation or restriction." That is in writing to our legislators from the state government. That is how they are and have been for quite a while interpreting this law. On the case of the unfunded mandate, the legislature put together a fifty million dollar grant to fund the mandate. What the auditor said was, is it shouldn't be a grant, it should be, it shouldn't be something they have to apply for, it should be something we give to them. This board chose not to sue the state. I know it was in private session, but since you said what your vote was afterwards. Number two, Wilmington.
Again, over here.
Wilmington, sorry, Rich, sorry. Apologize. Wilmington, Wilmington's vote not to comply was ten votes. That was the difference when they voted the second time. And in the same email that I got from a couple of state legislators, including current legislators, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities also said, "We've read KP Law's advisories to the town of North Reading and could not agree more." Thank you.
Who's that? I'm sorry.
The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Last, and I do one more thing, I'm sorry, I do one more thing. The same community also sent me a text, email communication about a month ago and said, "We don't know what's going to be in the two thousand twenty-six budget because it has not been finalized yet, so go back and take a look at two thousand twenty-five," which I did. And there were nine grants that we, that had language in it that says, "If you are not in compliance, you do not comply for." I'd be curious to see what two thousand twenty-six looks like. What they said basically is, "Any grant that is discretionary, the governor has already decided that if you are not in compliance, you will not qualify for that grant." So whatever it is today, most probably is going to be worse moving forward, but if you look at two thousand twenty-five, the total number of grants that we would not be, we would not be eligible for was over a billion dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I do.
My name is Chris Perkins, I'm at Martin's Landing. This is, this is just ignorance on my part, but is there any chance that, let's say the town approves this, as written, that the state would look at and say, "You're just like doing a magic act," and they would not accept it because we're really not allowing new homes to be built? Any chance at all?
Thank you. Actually, Danielle Michael, they've already, yeah.
Please.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Vice Chair. And thank you for joining us tonight, I appreciate that. So the three citizens petitions are modeled after three articles that were sponsored by the Community Planning Commission at Town Meeting last year, both in June and then again in October. So as we were preparing, as we were preparing those three articles, the Town Planner interacted with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They provided us a letter, I believe in early two thousand twenty-four, maybe late two thousand twenty-three, which indicated that they had approved of our bylaw, although...
I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry. They don't issue an official approval until after a bylaw passes and it's officially submitted to the state. It was a test review that advised us of any issues, and there was no indication that it wouldn't pass. I'm sorry.
So that's an important question. The Attorney General approves a bylaw, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities reviewed it and determined that it appeared to be complying with their requirements. They also noted that they didn't really like that we were rezoning an existing property only because it would not generate new housing units, but they nonetheless issued that advisory that they felt that the bylaw would comply. So again, for those who don't know, there's two things that need to happen here. The Attorney General needs to approve a bylaw. That happens with every vote at Town Meeting for a bylaw change. Then the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities needs to determine that it complies with the statute under three-eight, the MBTA zoning.
Did you see the initial, the initial action plan?
I'm sorry.
The initial action plan or the citizen petition?
So they opined on the initial action plan, which was the three positions that were submitted to June and October of Town Meeting last year.
So, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Through you, the gentleman's question was about these articles, not last year's plan, or, I'm sorry, not the action plan that we submitted. So to this gentleman's point, the first sentence, like I've mentioned to a lot of you here, the first sentence in the MBTA three-eight law is home suitable, home suitable for families with children. for families with children, which is, in my opinion, complete opposite of what Martin's Landing is. So I think it is like a magic trick. So that's why my personal belief is I think the state is going to strike that 55-plus, because in my opinion, I don't see how, you know, you can have something that contradicts the law.
Yes, Chair.
Yes, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, through you. They advised Town Council in the conversation, either today or Friday, that the 55-plus language that would specifically allow for any restriction, that they felt that it would comply with what's required for MBTA compliance. I think I heard that somebody else asked that question, was provided an answer, and I know we were similarly providing information, going back last year along the way as well. So I think the 55-plus thing is, I think, something that we feel like has been addressed. I can't speak to why the regulations were written in the way that they were, but, and we, again, the town was not necessarily the, was not, as we know, the sponsor of these three articles, so they did not go through the traditional review process with the EOHLC. But three bylaws that were very similar to it did go through that in 2023 and early 2024. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you.
So the arguments here, I guess voting for this, I'm evacuating. And the law is not ambiguous, which is the term is misuse and capra, the relation to the 55. The law, my colleague, look at the law and see what it says, look at the facts, determines what the town can do with a zoning bylaw, what it cannot do. What it can not do is age restrict through the bylaw. That does not preclude the property owner doing something else. The property owners writes a separate and distinct from the town's zoning bylaw. What this act says is the town, through zoning, and it applies to this, cannot age restrict, and it's not. This proposal does not age restrict. The town's zoning bylaw does propose, and again, this wasn't my bylaw. This was proposed by the Planning Commission. These two amendments that I included, which should help out in the main motion, 55 by right and the 908, number of units, we had those all vetted last fall. It just was not incorporated by the Planning Commission in the main motion. This isn't, this isn't news, this isn't mine. I just took what the work that Danielle did, the Planning Commission did, the administration did, and put it forth in consideration. They included those two very key, there's few words, but key amendments. So it's not ambiguous, it's not, at least it's conflicted toward, because it doesn't conflict. What the town can do, through zoning, and what the property owners can do are two very separate and distinct things. So what, to answer your question, we control, and again, they put it right and right, didn't they? It meets the letter of the law. We're not happy about it, but yes, it does meet the letter of the law. So coming into compliance, no impact as far as any additional units being built, we comply. You know, we're one of the communities, few communities that can do this. And again, to me, I don't think we're shirking our responsibilities, because I believe the Planning Commission at this point can be looking at producing more housing in the town of North Reading, or they can take a more measured approach to something that we can afford to grow into as opposed to having forced ours. We're in a very unique and fortunate position that we have Martin's Landing, the overlay district already done and already there along the way as well. So we're very fortunate to be in that situation as far as impact on that. The only way we're going to be able to comply is if the town really approves these, and then we're done for the time. So all the questions and supposed facts that were brought up here earlier, they don't relate to what we're talking about, whether or not, you know, utilizing the town council or by law, or the town administration, but it's all property property. It's nothing to do with what we're talking about in this. Again, what I shared with the Committee of Planning Commission, the Finance Committee, the other members of the board, as far as far as the last state legislative legislation to me as chair, it's not a fair, or whatever, it's an important information. I'm not going to hold you. I accept the criticism for sharing the information. As far as the unfunded mandate, it keeps being brought up here. The state auditor was here just less than two weeks ago and said, "Her determination, her division of local mandates, determination, has nothing to do with whether or not you need to comply with the law." As far as, you know, why haven't we put money in for you or put in for requesting? The administration has all the information available. There's nothing to request yet because the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has not determined what is reimbursable for yet, because the state has not agreed that it's an unfunded mandate. There were communities who were putting in, you know, some action against that to determine whether or not, well, that's, that's for another day, and this is what the auditor said. She couldn't provide, it's her responsibility and her office's responsibility to ensure that the state is complying with reimbursing communities for the expenses associated with coming into compliance with the zoning. She stated that night, when she was here. I don't know what that is, because if we don't determine what that is, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities determines that, and they haven't put out the list yet. Once they put out that list, we'll determine whether or not you've been reimbursed and for how much. So it's not on us to do it. It hasn't been done yet by the state. Thank you. Big labor, thank you.
Mr. Perkins, please. Come up to the podium, please.
Thank you, Jeff Griffin, 31 Abbott Road. In listening tonight, there's a couple of points that really hit home, as a lot of you know, that I've been studying this for about two years. So in the beginning, to Mr. Massey's point, trust. If you want to talk about that in the state, what I find interesting, when this thing first was revealed to us, and it was rolled out to us as a community, the state had experienced things that they didn't like along the way. So what did they do? They changed it. There's been three changes in the law since I've been studying this in two years. So to this gentleman's point at Martin's Landing, I don't blame you for feeling the way you feel, because all they have to do is change it. So it can be presented the way that they're talking about, if this passes, and you all can just, oh, okay, unbundling, and they can make a change.
Jeff, if you could...
So, I'm sorry, yep, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. And the second thing that I find astounding is that I've heard it, I think, three or four times tonight, that everybody is in agreement, that they don't like the law, and it's a terrible law. So why are we not, as a community and a group, and I understand it, I get it, it's, it's a law, it's a mandate, but if the people are saying no, and all of you have admitted to thinking that this is, or saying that this is a terrible law, a lousy law, for years I've been hearing this, I think every single one of you, except Catherine, has said that, only because of my experience here. So what I find astounding is that if we're, if this board's in agreement personally, and they think it's a terrible law, and other boards also in our community or commissions also think it's a terrible law, why are we not standing up for that? Why are we not standing up for what we believe in? You believe that it's terrible, but yet you won't. I find that just to be amazing. I know that I was, I have a duty here in town to do that, so that's why I've stuck to my protocols since the very beginning, because as Mr. Massey said, the people of Martin's Landing feel that this is a very real possibility when you're talking about forfeiting zoning rights. So that's, that's all I wanted to bring up with those two points, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Eric Dino, please come up to the podium. And then we'll see, Mike, was anybody online? Mike?
Not that I'm seeing yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Folks who are online, I think, if you raise hand or chat, that'd be great.
Paul DeNero, 42 Park Street. I brought my remarks here up a couple of years ago, when we were doing the sewer thing. And the point I was trying to make then is the same thing today. And I believe, I haven't spoken to people in town, whether they like it or not, but I'm assuming everybody thinks like me. We all think that way, right? And so the problem is, you spoke very nicely about the benefits of it, and why not? We're right there, we're on the cusp of glory, you know? But, you know, there's, my, my feeling is, there's no, there's no easy ride, there's no free ride. And anytime there's a, there's a bunch of money that's being held out there, and the state says, "Oh, you qualify, and so you just won that," it's like running a race, and so everybody's happy. But, you know, you, you don't talk about, you don't talk about the, what happens when you get one of these, one of these bits, or what do you call them? The money that's hanging out there?
Grants.
Grants.
Yes.
So there's a lot of, the point I made up a couple of years ago was that you take certain money from certain things, especially for schools and stuff, that they want you to hire six teachers for three years or five years. And so that's what you do. Then it comes time when their, when their time is up on that, on that grant, you know, you sign another one. So after a while, you have 20 teachers on the, on the employee list that wouldn't have been there if that grant hadn't been specific about what you have to do. So there's a lot of things that I think aren't added up and aren't looked at. It's just like, oh, well, we got to do it, you know, the money's here, let's get the money today, we use it, we worry about, we worry about 2026 when it comes. And so I'm hoping that we look at this in a pragmatic way of what really happens downstream. And I don't think it's a pretty picture. I mean, it helps the town grow, like, hey, we're growing, look at this, we got, you know, six fire trucks and stuff like that. Anyway, that's my point.
Thank you.
I'll just add to that point, you know, why are other towns saying no? Because they have a lot to lose. They are being forced to do something they don't want to do, and they have properties that are vulnerable to this law. And so they're voting no because they have a lot to lose. North Reading, actually, nothing changes. We don't have anything to lose. So we actually are really, I'm delighted that other towns are fighting it, because if they are successful somehow, when the state law changes, we all end it. And what I'm also delighted about is that when other towns say no, it improves our chances of getting more grants, because as they get dropped off, we get more opportunities to get more money. So let's think about this from a very practical point of view. On the principle, do we like it? We don't like it. However, I agree with Mr. Kelly that housing, there are housing needs that are needed in Massachusetts. The amount of development that has happened downtown Boston, our economic engine is just unbelievable. When you look at Sanofi, when you look at Bristol Lyra Squid, with all the building they're doing down, what used to be the old East Cambridge, Leach Merritt area, it's unbelievable the amount of development and economic injury we have in our, in our state. But on the east, in the east side of the state, we don't have enough housing. And so one of the ways that the state is dealing with it is to deal with the MBTA communities as a way to make that happen. The other way they're dealing with it is accessory dwelling units, which for years I tried to get the town interested in, didn't happen, but the state came in and said, "By right, now you can have accessory dwelling units." So we all have responsibility to work on our housing as well. And the last thing I'll say is just on Town Council. I remember in sixth grade, I was on a debate team, there was an issue that was presented in front of us, we all lined up about, you know, those who were for, those who were against, and just before we gave our debate, we had to switch sides. Lawyers are no different. If you're willing to pay them, they're willing to defend whatever you want, even if it's indefensible, even if they tell you, I mean, do you think every defense attorney takes money and takes it from somebody who's not guilty? I mean, really, think about that for a second. So I'm delighted that KP Law is working both sides of defense, because that's how you come to a better conclusion. I'm going to stop there. I'm just going to go and see, is there anybody online?
Is Mr. Noel Kelly on my ask that?
Okay. So, go ahead. Please, I'm going to yourself and just talk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, just asking, Mr. Chair, just shaking hands, is he okay?
Can everybody hear that okay?
Yes.
Yes, they're already shaking their hands, yes.
Yes, just a couple of comments.
Through you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly?
Okay.
Can we just get your address, your residential address, please?
Oh, I apologize, Noel Kelly, lived in Cleveland, Illinois. I've been following this for three years, probably, it's been on the block, and it's been, in the very beginning, I, I reiterate my credos to our town planner, who, very early, saw a synergy to our partners, and put a lot of that into forming a kind of action that would allow the town to this, on this law, which we all agree is on. That conversation was long past. Now, we would draw a line in the sand, the state drawing a line in the sand is not doing justice to the town, it's serving, it is serving, for the men. This is a town-wide issue that needs to be addressed as a group, not as groups, group. So are we, I have nothing but admiration for those who brought this forward for the last three years, particularly to the latest amendments to military area. And I think that the terms of using military terms, who would I follow over the hill when it came to attack? Well, would I attack the one who has done it numerous times, or am I going to follow the one who has ideological notions of how it should? And Sir O'Leary is the one who brought us to this position, the chance that he was instrumental in creating what is now Martin's Landing. He was instrumental, and with Mr. Pierce, and both of those recognized through their years of service and their years of experience of serving on the board and serving the town, they recognize and understand of the ultimate benefits and the rewards that are within that. And I would only encourage anybody in this to recognize that this is a, this is an end result, and we have to move forward with this event and serve the town as best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anyone else online? I'm not seeing any other hands up or anybody who looks at the chat message. So go back inside here? Yes, Mr. Smart.
Well, some privacy.
I have a question, I guess it would go to Ms. Knight, if you could help me with this one. I have a letter here, I'll quickly get it the right way. I think it was dated to you February 23rd of this year, of 2025, maybe, 2024, and it states, basically, from the EOHLC, they appreciate the work Town North Reading has, and the Housing Commission has done, with the two completed projects. Basically, they're asking you to reevaluate the program. Have we done anything? I know Mr. O'Leary mentioned earlier that this was put in place potentially several months ago, but this letter here stating that the EAOHLC doesn't like our presentation, is this something we're prepared, or we've adjusted or amended?
For you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so that was the letter that Mr. Gilberto was referring to earlier. We did a test review with the state, they sent us that letter indicating that they weren't happy, that we didn't have a plan in place, that we create more housing, but they didn't address, they didn't tell us that we needed to do anything different, other than, I believe there were some ways that we accounted for floodplain area, and there were adjustments that were made for, for that. That was really the only area they told us needed to be changed. I believe there might have been some additional language having to do with how we worded the site plan review language. Those adjustments were also made. All adjustments were made that we were told we needed to make for compliance. They made... They made their displeasure known, that we had gone with a plan that didn't create housing. There was discussion about changing to a plan that would create housing that didn't appear to have support. So that was not pursued.
So the new one that's been amended or adjusted, do we feel that this is going to suffice with what the state's looking for?
From the indications that we were given by the state in that test review and from the adjustments that we made in order to achieve compliance in the way that they would suggest, yes, we believe that what we have... And when I say we, including the citizens petition as well as the petition that went forward, that was brought to town meeting in October. From what we understand and know about the bylaw and from the conversations with the state, we believe that this is... These are amendments that could be accepted as being compliant. There is no guarantee of that until we actually have a town meeting vote and the information is submitted to the state and we are officially given a letter.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I'd just like to address the question that Mr. Griffin posed against to all of us. If we're so abhorred by... Find this abhorrent, you know, why aren't we standing up to it? I'm standing up to it verbally, but I'm not standing up to it with the taxpayers' money. I mean, I take my position here extremely seriously, just like I do my own budget at home. You know, I pick my battles. You know, if I thought it was... And again, I don't see anybody else here, you know, faking over the dough for the legal fees to fight this thing. Even in the last October town meeting, when it was going... It appears that it was going to not pass. I made a motion to reconsider the legal budget, to put money in to back up what we voted. And people said, no, we don't want it and we're not going to support fighting the battle either. So how do you read that? But, you know, why am I standing up to it? I'm standing up to it, again, I verbalize it with my state senator, my state representative. You know, the other interesting fact is there's 177 communities that are impacted by this. And all those state reps and state senators have to stand for reelection and have to listen to their constituents and their local boards and committees and commissions. And every time an amendment is being put forth for consideration, it's getting no more than 30 votes. No more than 30 votes. We've got 177 communities represented here, more than half of Carmouth, Massachusetts. And any amendment to this law right now, as we were told by a state rep, a state senator, isn't going to happen. And it's not happening. I mean, the votes have been, over the last several weeks, on the budget amendments, strictly addressing these issues. 27 votes, 30 votes, 164 against, you know, 170 against. So it's not changing and it's not going away. And they're not going to change the rules and regulations at this point because they were also told nothing's going to happen in the next four years, as far as amending this. So why aren't I standing up with it with the taxpayers' money? Because it's a waste of their money and we have other things that we need to spend the money on. This is not a wise move. I'm not going to waste the taxpayers' money fighting a legal suit, filing a legal suit, or coming out on our compliance deliberately and intentionally because philosophically I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to wasting people's money. We have more important things to spend it on. Whether it be for the seniors up there, for our rides program, you know, or whether it be the schools. I mean, we're laying teachers off and we're laying people off in the school department. We're cutting back programming, like foreign languages. And we want to spend hundreds of thousands, tens, hundreds of thousands of dollars on a legal suit that you can't win? That's irresponsible. As much as I don't like it, I pick my battles. And I'm not going to waste the taxpayers' money. So it's pretty simple answers. You know, I can join you in philosophically agreeing with you, but I'm not going to philosophically spend the taxpayers' money irresponsibly.
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Jeff Griffin, 31 Abbott Road, in response to that. So I just want to read a couple of things real quick. Cava, Drackett, Ducksbury, East Bridgewater, Freetown, Halifax, Hanson, Marblehead, Marshfield, Middleborough, Middleton, Millbury, Milton, Needham, North Reading, Raleigh, Seacon, Tuxbury, Westminster, Weston, Wilmington, Winthrop, and Rendell have said no.
Marblehead said yes.
Yep, have said no. And there are 72 towns that are actually interim compliant, so they haven't agreed yet either. So they're also waiting for July to come to see what the state does. So the question is, do I believe that we're wasting money? Well, first of all, no one's been sued. So you don't know what's... You threw the number $200,000. Where'd you get that number from?
I said tens of hundreds of thousands.
No, you set up the $200,000. Where did that number come from? Okay, so that's called fear mongering, thank you.
I did not say $200,000.
That's called fear mongering. You said $200,000. Mr. Chair, point of order. He did say $200,000. He's fear mongering right here in this stadium. He is. So he doesn't know that as a fact because the council stood up at the last town meeting and said, oh, I don't know, maybe about $10,000. Okay, that's the difference. That's a big difference, Steve. You're throwing that number out there and you just did.
Okay.
Okay, I get it.
It's not $10,000.
Right, okay, I get it. I get it. But it's, you know, the thing is though, Mr. Chair, to throw something out like that is fearful. It is fearful. And the thing is, all those cities and towns that I just read to you, this straight up knows, right? So they're willing to stand on principle, okay? And as far as, you know, the town, the state, I'm sorry, coming in and addressing the town, the town says no. And they come in and they're going to assign us something, right? What... And I would love to know through legal counsel, what would be... My question to counsel would be, what would be the process, procedure, and what would this town have as far as impact? Would it be just a blind... Nope, sorry, buddy, you're out, you're done? Is that what they're going to do to like 34 cities and towns? Is that how it works? Or are they going to sit down and try to negotiate and work with them? Because right now, there are five, I believe, three that are in negotiation asking for an impasse, or not impasse, a... Somebody help me with the words. Exemption. There are three towns asking for exemption. When, about a year ago, we talked about exemption and we were told the state would not even recognize it. So now the state has. So again, another twist and turn in the state of Massachusetts and what can happen on the what-ifs. So again, to the trust issue, I just feel that a lot of people here in North Reading and a lot of the people in certain parts of town, they just, they don't trust it. They don't like it, they don't trust it. Thank you.
Just a clarification on exemptions.
Go ahead.
Just as a clarification of exemptions, it's apples and oranges. The exemption that they're seeking is under the Department of the State Audit's Division of Local Mandates, unfunded mandate. That's what the exemptions that have been filed for, those three communities, there were originally five. Now there's three. That has nothing to do with coming into compliance with the law. As the state audit has said, two separate issues. All it is, is they're seeking exemption for compliance until they get reimbursed the money that they're owed for coming into compliance. That's what the exemption is for. So it's apples and oranges here. It has nothing to do with coming into compliance and fighting the MBTA Act. Those communities, as far as...
They're not going to move forward until there's an issue.
If I might. Again, those exemptions, all it says is, you don't have to comply until you get paid, to get paid the money that you owe to come into compliance. Doesn't mean you won't have to commit compliance. You will commit to compliance once you're reimbursed by the state. That's what that exemption is. It has nothing to do with whether or not they have to comply with the law and whether or not the law is the law, which the Supreme District Court said. Two very separate issues. The state audit was right down the street of Kitty's two weeks ago and said that as clear as day. And again, you're mixing it up. I don't know if it's intentional or you don't know, or you don't understand, one or the other. But if you don't understand, okay. If it's intentional, that's not fair. Again, a lot of what's been happening has been unfair. Martin's Landing, they're being targeted, and it's unfair. Their community is not going to be uprooted. Their community is not going to be... The 55-plus is not going to be removed. There are not going to be any more units built there. None of the units are going to be built by a developer, as you were proposing just a few short months ago, that you were afraid that the developer is going to go in there, buy the units, and subdivide and put more housing in there. We've addressed that. And they couldn't do it anyway, but we addressed it anyway. So don't talk about it.
That's a normal lady. A normal lady can still happen. It can still happen.
The town can do it as many times that the town can do it.
The council said the same thing. They couldn't...
Okay, okay, stop.
But the town can do it anytime they want. The town can do it.
They said 100%. The council could not answer that question with 100%, sir. Two times.
Here's the gavel.
All right, back it up, guys, come on. Give my first time, you know, give them a little...
You're doing well.
So just a suggestion. So I know that whenever we have a public hearing, we have to be in the obligatory hamster wheel where everyone just repeats the same stuff over and over, no one changes opinions. However, a suggestion, because this has been talked about so much, we should get whatever, any new information, which we're not going to, okay? Because I chaired 15 of these discussions. However, like, it seems that everyone's entrenched and everyone has a right to their opinion. So there's still a lot of business left because MBTA is not the end-all, be-all, even though that's what it is. And, you know, just a suggestion I have as, you know, to you, doing it the first time, that, you know, at some point, it is what it is. You go to town meeting, you hit the clicker one or two, thank you for playing.
But as far as being entrenched, that's a good... Everybody is not entrenched. Because look what's occurred. The Planning Commission went from 4-1 opposed to 4-1 in favor.
Let me rephrase, entrenched is wrong.
No, no, no. Okay, in other words, it's evolved as the facts have come out. And I think that's what's important. And I think now there's an opportunity for the town to make their decision, and I concur with you, you know?
Thank you, please.
I have Cheryl Perkins, also from Martin's Landing, and new in town from March, not entrenched, but clearly this has been going on in town. And what I hear is that a very nice, tidy package that solves a lot of problems for all of the town is being dropped on a very small portion of town. And that doesn't sound like it right now, but could potentially in the future, nobody can guarantee 100% won't impact the people who are currently living in that overlay district. And what I don't hear, and maybe what hasn't been talked about, and this is someone hearing all this discussion with a fresh perspective because I haven't been following this for the last three years, is I'm hearing two arguments, do nothing, vote no, do nothing. You know, MBTA is no good, do nothing. Or drop this overlay on people who are already living there in their 55-plus and in the Edgewood departments. But there's something else out there, which is to look for a place in North Reading where you can meet this law and not put it on top of people who are already living there. And I'm sure that was looked at at one point. But I'm just hearing two solutions here, and there are more than two, so.
So the CPC did have, you know, they looked at alternative sites.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
And it was the site that they were considering would suppress our ability to build a commercial...
Yeah, I heard that earlier. But I'm sure there's got to be more land in North Reading.
There is, but that was the most probable for multi-family housing.
But I'm just saying it doesn't have to end with one or two of the choices that everybody seems stuck on tonight.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
And that's a fresh perspective.
And I think what you're hearing is everybody's doing everything they can to make sure Martin's Landing does not change.
Yeah, but you can't guarantee that.
There's no guarantees right now. But I do know that the HOA...
So why put it on top of people who are already living somewhere when you could put this overlay somewhere where people are already invested and living?
Okay, I appreciate your comment, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Atkinson, 82 Elm Street. Just to clarify, I understood that Mr. Baker signed the law into law, worst decision he ever made, which is why I'm glad he's running the NCAA instead of still in the corner office. But setting that aside, whoever's in the corner office, you know, we're fighting a losing game here. The bottom line is the Democrats control both houses and now they control the corner office. So I feel bad for Mr. Tar and Brad, Mr. Jones, who have to fight these losing battles. You know, it must get tough getting all those arrows in your back every day up on Beacon Hill. With that being said, you know, if you don't like the way the legislature is voting, we need to find more people to run against some of these folks and change some minds up there. Again, that's a long, tall order, especially since we don't vote in those other districts. So, but with that being said, again, we're in a tough position here. Everybody agrees we're in a tough position here. I don't like these choices any more than anybody else does. But given the choice between doing something that gives us some control and minimizes the impact of this bad law versus doing nothing and risk spending millions of dollars to defend ourselves in court, I don't know, I just don't see that there's an alternative. I don't like having no alternatives. I was an engineer for many years before I retired and I always had at least three different backup plans going, you know? So I don't like these no-win solutions. But sometimes that's what life hands you, you know? Nothing is certain but death and taxes. And unfortunately, given the democratic socialists on Beacon Hill, we're going to be getting a lot more taxes pretty soon. So with that being said, let's just get this, get on with this thing, get it done. And then we can solve, we can talk about some of the others' issues we came here to talk about tonight, like the purchase of the Ocean State Joblot property or the fire station design or some of the other things that doesn't look like we're going to get to tonight.
All right, so let's wrap this up as quickly as possible again. Do we have anyone else? Yes, gentlemen.
Yes, you do. This is real quick. Jim Gannon, 9 Duane Grand. Elm Street. What one of my friends referred to as the nightmare on Elm Street. I know we spent money fighting that. Question to the town administrator is, ballpark, what did we spend?
You set aside like $150,000.
My recollection is we had between $150,000 and $200,000. I think we have a balance of about $120,000, maybe. I think the number is less than $100,000 in that case. But keep in mind, that was before the Housing Affairs Committee, that was not in court.
My, I guess my other, my follow-up question would be, from an estimate perspective, it's not $5,000. If we decide, if we end up suing the state, I would assume it would be... You're right, I don't know. I don't know, but I was curious. So last thing. The Attorney General is fighting the mandate. And that all legal action against the mandate or the fact that it is an unfunded mandate is sitting with Judge Gildea, and I'm sure I pronounced that wrong, in Plymouth Superior Court. And the judge is supposed to rule soon as to what kind of relief would be there for cities and towns. So we will have an answer to that, no matter what we do. We will have an answer to that at some point in the future. And the vote on what ultimately ended up being the MBTA, the legislative vote on that was unanimous. There was no dissenting votes in 2021, including our reps. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw a hand up right here. Please come forward.
Dick Matolo, Martin's Landing. Does anybody know if any of the other towns have submitted an over 5, 55 community in their applications? Are we the only town that's attempting this?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
This is a major consideration. Anybody that's looked at the executive office of housing and livable communities, looked at their websites and seen what it's all about, and then gone on and read the full 19 pages of the law and the guidelines, every single word in there has a specific meaning, it's there for a purpose. And all the way through, it's... And all the way through, it says cannot be age restricted, this is the issue. You've got a lot of town property that you already own, that probably could be put aside for this, put into this overlay district, and create the new housing that the law is intended for. I just think you're asking the folks at Martin Landing to take a, a big leap of faith. KP Law, I don't think is willing to sign that we're afraid that we won't be coerced later on trying to, trying to comply with the ongoing obligations to stay in full compliance. interim compliance is, is not full compliance. And would be at, would we be asked five, ten years from now to start de-listening the, you know, the over-five restrictions and that? I don't know. There's a lot of unknowns here, and I don't feel it's, it's fair to Martin's Landing to offer them up. I, I know, I can see the, you know, the, the plus side from your standpoint, but it's, I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just Danielle, we can't use town-owned land, right?
That's correct, it's not eligible for three A districts.
Yes, so, so Dick, Mr. Matolo. Dick, just in relation to Dick, just in relation to using land that we already own, the law does not allow us to use town-owned land to come into compliance. It's current, so we can't use it.
You can't take it out of conservation, I know that.
No, you can't, no, can't use town-owned land to come into compliance.
Okay. I think we're better than, oh, one more, Juan Te, no, and Jeff, all right.
Excuse me, Jeff, you're on four twenty-seven Park Street. You find out how the wheels turn in one's mind by the spokes that come out of their mouth and how they make their decisions. Mr. Studo is correct, nothing is new coming out of this, it's almost a waste of our, our time, to be honest with you. But you asked, Mr. Walder, you asked, you know, why do towns who have the opportunity or lose so much more by voting no? And that's taking a stand for something they believe in, which is not what I'm seeing here. They could, took a stand to say, we don't want our lights being usurped by the state, and they had the courage to do so. And then, Mr. Walder, for you to say that the more or imply, for the more who say no, the more we get in, in grants. Now, think about that, that's a mentality, okay, that's how one thinks, all right? In war, if someone is in battle, and there's a dead man lying next to them, and they need more clothing, they start taking the clothing off of that dead man. And that's what you're doing. You're taking advantage of people who stood up for their rights while you savage the money. That's the mentality that is behind this, and that is a big problem, right then and there. So if you just go on principle, which apparently is not that much on this side, on this side, yes, but on that side, no, they don't understand principle. If all the towns stood up to a state, it's kind of like the Politburo in Russia, okay? They decide what's going to be, and the people don't respond, because they can't, or they won't. This is what we have here, this is what we have in Massachusetts. Yes, it's led by the Democrats, okay? They have a supermajority, they do what they want, okay? And we acquiesce, because we don't have the courage. Our select board does not have the courage to stand up to the people, just as Jeff Griffin said. The people don't want it, it was tremendous vote in October. The people don't want it, but Steve is determined, he's going to put that fight up there, okay? He doesn't care about the populace, he only cares about what he wants to have done. It's his own personal private power play. So, I think what we have to do here, and I, I just hope that, you know, June town meeting, which really shouldn't be happening, it should be after October or in October, is when we should be having this, all right? You know, I hope that the, the majority of the people who attend stand up and show that we don't like being pushed around.
I mean, click.
Sorry?
Click.
Well, click. They can stand up and click, how's that sound? So, you know, Wenham and Hamilton are suing the state, Middleton is suing the state, okay? They're not worried about the dollars, they're not, you know, like saying, the money is not the issue, but the issue is our rights. And the sooner that we stand up as, as, as real Americans, okay? The sooner that we do that, all right, the better this state will be run, and the better this town will be run. So I'll leave it at that, thank you.
So Jeff, I'll, I'll just count it one thing. The, the towns that are saying no aren't saying it out of principle. They're saying it because pragmatically they have a lot to lose. And so, you have your opinion that it is principle, no, it's my turn.
Yeah, I didn't say it yet.
Yeah. You think it's principle, and you think that they're sticking to the guy, and I think they have a lot to lose from the practical side. And it's not about, it's not about principle, it's about pragmatism. And so, it could be both sides, but it's not one, it's not the other, right? And then the overwhelming vote, you know, six months ago when we did this, was based on a different set of facts than we have now, is lie clear what is going on. And from my point of view, I am not going, I'm not going to be voting, I'm not going to be taking it out of committee that you don't get a chance to vote on defending yourself against legal fees, or defending yourself against grants, and defending yourself against a master coming in and telling us what we're going to do. That is for the voters to decide, based on the facts that we know, and the facts have been presented tonight, a lot of facts have been presented that were not able to be presented back in the previous town meeting.
So you?
And, I'll have to, yeah.
Okay. I had the same problem.
Oh, and another thing is, Mr. O'Leary is not doing this as a power play. This is not, this is not his motivation. His motivation is there's been a lack of leadership, both in the select board and at the CPC, to do something to address this. And this is a, this is an important issue for the town, has been for three, four years, it's been really driving us all. Mr. O'Leary came forward with a citizen's petition for the first time in his thirty-four years of doing this, because no one else was stepping forward to bring it forward. He's encouraging to vote one way, but the most important thing is people come out and vote and decide if they want to take the risk of saying no to the state or to comply. And so let's just be fair about what he's been doing. Thank you.
So you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, with regard to your first comment, whether the towns are not doing it out of
Principle.
Principle. I have spoken to them, okay? Unlike, Steve gets his information third-hand, and then he brings it as if he's, he's very knowledgeable and everything, okay? I have spoken directly to town leaders, and lawyers, and former representatives, okay? And they have all come back and have told me that they are standing up for principle of being told what to do, okay? They haven't told me about pragmatism or anything like that, okay? That, you know, they could be right or wrong in their decision, but that's what they're standing up for, okay? They're not running after the money, because for them, it's not about the money, okay? And then, and the second thing that you said about the leadership of the CPC and, and someone in the select board, okay? The CPC had shown leadership throughout this process. I don't agree with the decisions that Dave Rudlev forced or coerced his members to change because he thought it was the right thing to do. This isn't about the right thing to do, it's about following the, the process, which is the right thing to do, okay? But, there was no integrity issue with the CPC. And, and not all the members of the select board did not show, did not show integrity, okay? I don't know if I said that right. They, they showed integrity, the other half did not, okay? Integrity is a very important thing, because it tells me how you think, okay? And if you don't have that, then you're telling me that it doesn't matter, all right? So, so I, I, I think, you know, in defense of the CPC, they, they were they held all the meetings that they could possibly hold, with very little showing of people. Unlike tonight, this is decent showing, still have a lot, but, you know, still pretty good for a select board meeting. So they, they, they did a great job, and they looked at both sides. That's something I don't see on this side of the table. No, look, they had no courage to come to one of the forums, okay? That, that we held, no courage, but you want to listen to someone come back and say, hey, hey, did you hear what they said? All right? You know what Diane Desoglio said, because somebody told you.
No, I watched it on Norcan.
Okay.
I watched it on Norcan.
I'm glad to hear that. So.
And I also watched the other forums that you had, on Norcan.
I, people have told me, people have told me that, that you have been, in fact, you even once said it, someone told me. Okay, all right, so.
Let's try and wrap this up.
So let, I want to wrap this up, because I, I feel free to, all right? Thank you.
You good? All right, thank you, everybody, thank you, oh, Michael, please.
One more, one more comment online, I'll just read it, was a chat comment inquiring about the town meeting. Just to clarify, this is on the warrant for the annual town meeting, so there is no warrant requirement for a vote on this. There is an article that requires a warrant on the special town meeting, which we'll get to at the end of the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, that closes that part of.
Articles one, two, and three, please. Article four is a citizen's petition to amend the non-threatening zoning bylaws, two hundred dash six one, attachment one. Again, it's to.
Let's get, hold on just one second.
So what we're going to do is we're going to run through all the articles and see if there's any. Mr. De Naro, thank you. We're going to run through all the articles, and again, if there's public comment on any at all, or any of them, we'll, we'll take them. Article four, citizen's petition to amend non-threatening zoning bylaws, two hundred dash six one. Basically, to submit, the citizen's petition to amend non-threatening zoning bylaws to change the minimum lot size requirement for resident zone D from one hundred and twenty thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet, so basically from three acres to one acre, equivalent to the requirement of surrounding residential zone R. Is the proponent present? I, I don't see the proponent present. I know I was present at the public hearing at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission made a recommendation, it disappears if you'd like to do it, or the town planter in relation to the citizen's petition. What, what does it propose to do, and what was the recommendation?
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair. Oh. I am looking at you, sorry. Um, yes, um, the CPC discussed it and took a lot of comments from attendees, and all of the comments that were received and were made by the board were negative. And so, based on that, the CPC voted unanimously to not recommend it to town meeting.
And again, this particular area is up around the Equestrian Drive area specifically, the, the Kings Row. Yep. That, that neighborhood, which is apparently three acres only, and the proponent is suggesting to bring it down to one acre.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. And again, I was at the public hearing also, and the general comments were not in favor of it, and even the proponent at that time appeared to be willing to either pass it over or.
I don't think the proponent necessarily commented one way or the other on how he wanted to proceed, but that, he was the only one, I think, who spoke in favor of the article.
And again, for the select board, again, the select board also unanimously voted to not recommend this particular article. Because again, there was a significant, there was significant testimony given at the planning commission meeting as to why is three acres only up in that particular area, as far as the geography and geograph, and these, and all the rest. And it didn't seem to make sense to, and there was a significant amount of opposition from the neighborhood themselves. So the select board unanimously recommended not to recommend. Is there any other comment on Article four? Yeah. Mr. Atkinson.
Mr. Atkinson, eighty-two Elm Street, I'm not liking this. It's owned a hundred and twenty thousand square feet for a reason, and that sounds like somebody wants to, to build more houses in that area, which means more school, more schoolchildren, more town services. I don't know if the added tax revenue from the additional properties would offset that, but at best, it's a break even. How many parcels are we talking about potentially, if they, if this goes through and we cut it down? We make three lots out of one, essentially.
Yeah. Do you remember how many lots were impacted?
It was in the thirties, I, I could probably, yeah, I did in the.
But approximately thirty, thirty house lots will be impacted. It doesn't mean that they could be subdivided and built upon, because again, a lot of the geography up there is not conducive to being built on.
Yes, and conservation land and other restrictions and things like that. I just want to get a sense of how many extra lots potentially could be created if this were to go through. Again, I'm not wild about the idea, given the tight budget we're under, and the issues with school enrollment and cutbacks in the schools and things like that. But I just want to see, get a sense of, would the town lose money, gain money, break even, that kind of thing?
Truly speculative, and again, if you're talking about thirty lots that are currently one hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and you cut it to forty, it could be divided into three, so you double, you would double the, double the number of homes that were there.
Right, potentially.
Could be another.
Yeah, potentially thirty lots could become ninety, so you already have thirty homes on thirty lots, you could get sixty more homes in there, in theory. And those sixty homes, how much that would impact town services, town expenses versus the revenue they would generate in tax, in tax income? But it sounds like a bad trade, especially if it involves things like cutting roads and things like that.
No, no, they wouldn't do that, but anyway.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think, Mr. Chairman, the, the, a lot of the neighbors that are neighbors to this gentleman called into the CPC meeting, they were all very, you know.
Yeah, very much opposed.
People chose those properties for a reason.
Right. Mr. McKnight.
There was just one point I wanted to make, there were, a, a couple of years ago, the quantum of vote for housing-related zoning amendments at town meetings was changed. So, housing-related articles that create a greater density of housing are majority vote now, not two-thirds, which we're used to for zoning amendments, and, I mean, it will be up to the moderator and town council to advise us, but I believe this would be a majority vote and not a two-thirds vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article four? Now we'll move on to Article five, twenty-twenty-five budget amendment. Mr. Gobertl.
Thank you, as of today, there are no anticipated budget amendments. We hold this article open for recommendations until right after the town meeting, in case anything does come in requiring action. So it has been recommended for, for the recommendation to be made at town meeting.
So right now, we have nothing to discuss?
At the moment.
All right. That could change between now and next Monday, all right?
Similarly, for Article six, the capital budget amendment, as of today, there are no anticipated budget amendments. We do, the, the board voted to recommend passing over by a unanimous vote, with the finance committee voting to recommend at town meeting, their, to offer at town meeting their recommendation.
All right. Any further discussion on Article six? I just will note through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Massey, I know you may have thoughts about potential capital amendment. In addition to Article, I think, eighteen, this could also be a spot for a capital amendment to be offered, within this current fiscal year. Thank you. Article seven, Fund Twenty-Twenty-Five Snow. Article seven, Fund 2025 Snow and Ice Deficits. Mr. Gilberto?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, this is an appropriation of $374,000 to be funded with free cash to cover the snow and ice deficit for the current fiscal year, and it has been recommended by both the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Any comments or input in relation to it?
I'm not seeing any online.
Amy?
Evening, Sonia, 24 Fieldcrest, I'm going to ask this question, I know the answer to it, but I get this question all the time. I think our snow and ice budget is $175,000 per year. Every year, we're transferring large lots money from free cash to cover the deficit. Can you explain to us why we do not increase the snow and ice budget higher than 175,000?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, it's a great question, it illustrates a great point. Snow and ice expenses are one of the few areas where the town is authorized under state law to deficit spend, which means to spend more money than we have approved in the budget. In order to do that, we need to maintain our budget appropriation from one year to the next, for the Department of Revenue to allow us to over expend and potentially carry over those expenditures to the next fiscal year. So if we were to increase this budget from the current $175,000, we would be required to maintain that number for future fiscal years in order to continue to be able to deficit spend and carry over any sort of deficit from one year to the next. So that folks know, we do carry what I would call an allowance in the revenue plan from one year to the next, that assumes that we will have a deficit, and we maintain that. It's sort of a way for us to comply with the requirements of state law, but still have the flexibility in the budget to fund, should we need to, the costs from one particularly bad winter. Rather than do that and fund it out of raise and appropriate, which is the tax levy, we have in recent years funded with free cash this expense in order to help try and balance the budget, but the short answer is in order for us to continue to deficit spend and carry over, we need to maintain that budget, so we've elected not to increase that number. But we have increased that allowance from one year to the next, I think it's, is it 350,000? 450,000, 450,000, it started 250,000, so it's gone up quite a bit here, so thank you for the question.
Any further discussion on Article seven? Input comments, no one online?
Not seen yet.
Alright, hearing none. Article eight, Fiscal Year 2025, Appropriated Transfer Funds to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund.
Thank you, this is a fund that's used for capital purchases and debt service, the balance is just over $1.9 million, and we are proposing to transfer in $1,686,505 from free cash, some of which will be used to pay for fiscal year 2026 debt service, sorry for the spelling error, in the later article under the operating budget, so $1.686 million to be transferred in from free cash. And both the Select Board and the Finance Committee have recommended the article.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Article nine, Appropriated Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
This is an article we hold on for potential votes if needed. We're going to transfer in funding through raise and appropriate under the fiscal year 2026 portion of town meeting, so therefore, we're recommending that this article be passed over. Select Board has voted to recommend it be passed over, and the Finance Committee will offer its recommendation at town meeting.
Any questions, comments? Article 10, Appropriate or Transfer Funds to the Stabilization Fund.
And the proposal here is to transfer in $350,000, it's the town's General Stabilization Fund or Rainy Day Fund, it's got a balance of just over $5 million, that would grow to $5,371,000 after this transfer, and it was recommended both by the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Article 11, Appropriated Transfer Funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund.
This article is a mechanism for us to make a transfer in from the fiscal year budget for solid waste, any sort of projected excess funds that we have in this current fiscal year, we're recommending that the article be passed over, and with the understanding that whatever is left over in this year's solid waste budget would be transferred into the stabilization fund in October, at October town meeting, with the funding source being through free cash, and was recommended by the Select Board, and this Finance Committee is going to recommend their, offer their recommendation at town meeting.
Any comments or questions, Article 11? Hearing none. Article 12, I hope town meeting goes this quickly, actually, probably will, this portion will.
This part will.
This part will. Fiscal Year 2025, Appropriated Transfer to the Water Stabilization Fund.
This is a transfer of retained earnings that were certified at the end of the last fiscal year to the water enterprise, and it's $530,698 to be transferred into a stabilization fund with a balance of just over $2.7 million. Recommended both by the Select Board and by the Finance Committee.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Article 13, Appropriate Transfer of Funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund.
We made a transfer into this fund at October town meeting, and therefore, recommending that it be passed over, with the Select Board having voted to recommend it be passed over, and the Finance Committee to offer its recommendation at town meeting. The balance is $2.2 million, so as you can see there.
Any questions or comments on Article 13? Hearing none. Article 14, Appropriated Transfer Funds to the School District Reserve Fund for Unanticipated or Unbudgeted Costs for Special Education Out of District Tuition or Transportation.
It's a fund that serves a purpose as is identified in the title, to expend from it, it requires a joint vote of the School Committee and the Select Board, excuse me, to authorize it expenditure mid-year. The balance is $488,677. The article was proposed by the School Committee, and the proposal here is to transfer $100,000 in free cash to this fund. Again, it can be accessed during the course of the fiscal year, should we experience budget pressure in the three areas that are identified in the title. Select Board and Finance Committee have also recommended.
Article 14, any further comment or questions? Going online, please.
Going online, Michael.
Article 15, Fire Station Planning.
So this would go into ongoing planning efforts for fire station construction, including the cost estimate for a new station and potential site selection. We anticipate requesting an amount not to exceed $200,000. I know the Fire Station Building Committee met last week and is reviewing proposals from a series of firms that have proposed assistance. I don't believe we have an exact dollar amount as of yet, so I think, is the intention to ask for the $200,000 as far as we know? That's a not to exceed number, right, from a contracting purpose, so it'll be $200,000, it sounds like. It was recommended by the Select Board and by the Finance Committee, the funding source would be free cash.
Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, Robert Atkinson, 82 Elm Street, seems like, I know you need to draw up plans, since you have to pay someone to draw up a plan before you can get an idea of the cost, but the one thing that concerns me is it seems like you got the cart before the horse. Before you can draw up a plan, don't you need to have a site? So, or is this part of picking a site first and then draw up a plan?
So, site selection is part of the scope that we're talking about with the firm here. So again, you know, just without going too far into history, we were prepared to move forward at town meeting last June with funding for renovation and expansion of the existing fire station.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, so you know, and there was a discussion, and there was some apprehension about that because of concern for response time on the west side of town. So there's some initial work that was done over the past year or so, evaluating response time, and now we're at the point in time where the Fire Station Building Committee is looking to both try to potentially identify a site, a scope for a construction project, and how that project on the west side of town might impact how much we actually have to do on the east side of town at Park Street.
Yeah. My next question is, is this linked to the purchase of the Ocean State Job Lot property as that would be the site for the new fire station?
I'm not going to speak specifically to any one parcel, but I will just note that I think that the areas that we've looked at and that the mapping have shown are ideal, are along Main Street, generally between, you know, generally either on the North Street, on the North Street end of Main Street if you're looking to address the northwest part of town, or near the intersection with Park Street on the southern end if you're looking to address the southwest portion of town.
Right, either close to the Lobster Claw or close to the Atlantic Plaza, which is the, now the stop and shop, towards the end of a line, almost to Route 125.
So it's really more the northern end or the southern end?
Yeah.
But the intersection with Winter Street?
Yeah.
Is sort of the sweet spot that addresses both areas?
Right, yeah.
But I don't want to speak to any particular property at this point.
Okay, because I was wondering if the reason for the purchase article for Ocean State Job Lot was related to this, and the answer is, you don't know yet.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's sort of...
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Alright, that'll help clarify things a bit. I'll get to the, when we get to the other article, I'll be asking about that, as to why we want to buy that, but we'll wait for that. Thank you.
Just through you, Mr. Chairman, just, Mr. Atkins, what it'll do is be able to give us the ability to procure a designer, the designer will help us program, do a lot of programming, which will result in providing us what size building we need, what size lot we need, how much parking we need, how many bays do we want. The difference, and what folks may say, is you've already done the programming, but that programming was for one station moving forward for good. This station is now adding, this potential project is now adding a second station, so the programming's a little bit different as far as where do you want to make the headquarters, where do you want to make, you know, well, how much do you want to get into the existing station, etc.
I get it, this is, you've got a lot of design issues for so...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article 15, Fire Station Planning?
You're speaking of a study that was done, is that study available to the public to view and see the results of the study?
I believe it's on the Fire Station Building Committee's webpage, and I think it has been since it was presented or shortly thereafter, so thank you for calling that out, Amy.
Thank you. Which is under the Fire Station website.
Any further questions, Article 15, Fire Station Planning? Nothing online, right?
No.
Alright, Article 16, Operating Budget.
Thank you.
We have a balanced budget.
We do. I, we, where we made a presentation, a pretty detailed presentation at the budget hearing on May 5th, I don't know how far in to this presentation we seek to go, but we do have a balanced budget, albeit with impacts, significant impacts upon the municipal bottom line and on the school departments. I'm going to zoom through to just kind of showing the highlights, it's a budget that portions funding in fiscal year 2026 of $40,780,000 for schools, $20,753,000 for municipal government, and $25,606,000 for fixed costs, so that's sort of the general allocation of funding in accordance with the efforts of the financial planning team to make available funds for the town's needs. There were significant reductions that were required to be made in order to balance the budget, both for municipal government, which is outlined in the listing of reductions there, which is, I believe, in the vicinity of $500,000 in the end, when we were able to come to a final revenue number. For the school department, there's a significant reduction in here as well, with ended up being approximately $600,000 in reductions that you see for fiscal year 2026, which included full-time equivalent positions as well. So it's not without significant impact that the budget is balanced, and as I have said in each of the previous few town meetings, the town is going to find itself and does find itself in a situation where it's going to have to seriously evaluate and consider what it's able to provide in services within the limitations of Proposition 2 and 1/2. I do want to recognize the work of the financial planning team, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee to come to a balanced budget for town meeting, which all three bodies have recommended, and is outlined in detail in the warrant that was mailed to everybody's homes.
Any specific questions in relation to the operating budget for fiscal year 2026? And again, at town meeting, we'll go into more detail in relation to, you know, what the exact cuts are or were.
So the school ones are on here, for anyone who is, you know, following along, they're on the website. I think there was an issue with the display where the budget website was not, budget webpage was not showing up on the top of the town news area, we've corrected that today, so I'd urge folks to take a look at the website under town news, where you'll find both the town meeting warrant, as well as a pretty extensive budget central webpage.
So any further questions or discussion in relation to the operating budget? Article 16, hearing none. Article 17, which is, let me go through this.
Article 17 is one-time fire department recruit and paramedic training, it's $108,400 from free cash and $64,800 from ambulance reserves to fund fire recruit and paramedic training, including but not limited to their training, outfitting, coverage, tuition, and incentives for firefighters that we are in the process of hiring and will hire during fiscal year 2026, in order to provide adequate staffing for covering the town. It was recommended both by the Select Board and by the Finance Committee.
And the number of firefighters again?
So there are four that we are in the process of hiring that were funded in the fiscal year 2025 budget, and there are an additional four that are proposed for funding as soon as October 1st in the fiscal year 2026 budget, for a total of eight, with two being added to each shift.
Any further discussion in relation to the one-time fire department recruit and paramedic training, Article? Hearing none. Article 18, Fiscal Year 2026, Capital Expenditures.
It's a capital improvement plan, as forwarded to town meeting by the Select Board and presented by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee at their April 14th meeting. It was recommended both by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. There is a department-by-department and project-by-project listing of funding for the projects to be funded, using either available funds or borrowing. The items for borrowing would require a two-thirds majority vote. We use a lot of free cash this year to try to make a dent as much as possible in our capital expenditures, again, those are one-time projects funded with one-time dollars, and that's articulated on this list, which is also on the town website and in the warrant that was mailed to everybody's homes, should have arrived last week or late the week before. It was recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion or questions relating to Article, what was that, 18? Article 18?
Just wanted to point out the significant increase in roadway rehabilitation and reconstruction for this year.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Which is a great positive.
There you go. Any other questions, comments? Article 19, Authorized Naming of the Multipurpose Field at the North Reading Middle School, High School.
This was a request by the School Committee, which had been recommended by the Select Board for the naming of the multipurpose athletic field to be named for Charles Karuji Senior, is a description that's in here, that's also included in the warrant, that describes the process that was followed, and the ultimate recommendation based upon Mr. Karuji's unusually effective and dedicated service to or on behalf of the youth in North Reading Public Schools, in the North Reading Schools. This is a grass field that is located between the softball field and the turf field on the middle high school property.
Any comments, questions?
Congratulations.
Other than, it's well deserved, and I would expect that, I don't think there's going to be too much opposition there, Chuck, at that town meeting. It's well deserved recognition, for Chuckie who's standing right here, again, attending more meetings than I do. When you see, you need a definition of public servants, Chuckie's mug shot's going to be there and at the post office, so. Chuckie, congratulations. Yeah, authorized the naming of the softball field.
Similarly proposed by the School Committee and recommended by the Select Board, this article would authorize the naming of the softball field at the high school for Jennifer Cassoli-Vant, who was nominated by Valerie Muscella. The School Committee had a public process, it's articulated here and in the warrant as well, and ultimately opted to name the field based upon her unusually effective and dedicated service to or on behalf of the youth in North Reading Schools. And again, recommended by the Select Board as well, and we thank her for her service and commitment.
Mrs. Fillmore?
I've never heard of this Joe advance, but why aren't we naming the fields, softball field, after one of the longtime coaches that the school has had? We have a lot of coaches in this town, or the coach, the teams in this town, that put their whole heart and soul on it, less than levy, you know, people like that, he's got a field hand after him. But why aren't we naming these fields after coaches? I mean, I, to hear Chuckie, he did a lot for the town, you know, but I don't know this woman from Attarben, I've lived in town for a long time, you know, a lot of... I've lived in town for a long time, know a lot of people. But this woman is, I'm just asking, softball field, we had, let's talk, let's talk about the softball coaches, you know, I mean, why aren't they naming a field after the coaches?
It's a nomination process.
Yeah, it was a nomination process, held by the School Committee, you know, they opened it up for recommendations, and there was a vetting process and a committee to determine a recommendation or no recommendation, and a recommendation has been made. Mrs. Moberg.
Hi, Karen Moberg, sixteen Hill Street. I just wanted to come up and speak on your question, Mrs. Fillmore, just because I was at the School Committee hearing and I actually was one of the people that nominated Mr. Karuji. I do know Jen Vant, and what I was pleased to learn at the hearing was her undoubted advocacy for the young women in this town. That field was originally supposed to be a baseball practice field for the men's team, and she went and sought after Title Nine and got it changed. So, I mean, I'm getting a little taken aback, I guess, but the amount of work that she did, put into and did the legal process and got it changed, that wouldn't be a softball field today if it wasn't for Jen Vant.
Mr. Karuji.
Charles Karuji, three Chester Street. To back up Karen, I was the chairman on the building committee, and we were going to make a baseball field out of it until she came forward and threatened us that she was, she was going to court. So to save the town some money and to save us some money, we said, okay, it'll be a softball field, all right? And that's how that wound up, okay? She worked hard at it.
She worked extremely hard at it. If people recall, you know, the softball field was over behind the little school field and was not anywhere near the high school, middle school complex or even the high school at the time, so it certainly made sense to move the field onto the, into the complex, and her advocacy certainly paid off. Congratulations to Jennifer. Any further comments in relation to Article twenty, naming the softball field? Hearing none. Article twenty-one, Living Function Building Demolition Project.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The article would fund expenses and related costs associated with the demolition of the function building at the Hillview Country Club at one forty-nine North Street. The total appropriation requested is a million dollars, with the funding sources being five-hundred-thousand dollars from Hillview retained earnings, which are available funds, and five-hundred-thousand dollars to be bonded. I believe it's the ultimate intention of the commission to actually not have to borrow the funding for the long term, but instead to cover it with a second year's worth of retained earnings for a total of a million dollars. There was a hearing that was held a couple of weeks ago here in this room that was well-attended. There was a lot of great questions and discussion, and we do have the slides from that presentation here and are prepared to review them if necessary tonight, and certainly will make sure that they are reviewed at the town meeting the night of June ninth. Through you, so I don't know how far into that we want to go, I defer to you.
Well, why don't we see what we have for questions, and then we have members of the Hillview Commission here this evening to respond to those questions. And again, I was at the public hearing, they did a fantastic job of outlining the process that they went through in order to come to this recommendation. It wasn't an easy one, and I think a lot of people that showed up that evening went away feeling comfortable with the recommendation that was made, even though it might not be what they went in thinking in relation to trying to save the original structure. So with that comment, Mr. Atkinson.
Mr. Atkinson, eighty-two Elm Street, again. I missed that meeting, I wish I hadn't. So if I ask some questions that have already been discussed, I apologize.
No, this is what this meeting's all about.
How did the condition of the building get so bad that you're contemplating demolition, number one? Number two, has anybody in a cost study to compare the cost of demolition versus renovation or repair? Three, renting the function hall's a significant source of income to the Hillview Commission and the Hillview Country Club. You're going to lose that source of income when you demolish the function hall. Then you're going to have to spend money to rebuild the function hall, to restore that capability. I assume you'll be coming back for, at a future town meeting for more money to rebuild the hall. So all of those reasons, how did we get into this position? And is there an alternative that can save the town some money? Again, I apologize if I've been asking stuff that was already covered, I missed that meeting.
All legitimate points and all legitimate concerns. But let's start with the revenue stream from the rental, first of all, as far as support. It's minimal. It's like thirty-five-hundred dollars a month. We're lucky to have someone in there operating it, and we put it out to bid and we had nobody, we had to chase some people down to get them to come in and occupy the building. As far as, you know, the condition of the building, the condition of the building is okay, but again, it needs major infrastructure, whether it be wiring, plumbing, but particularly the roof. If you recall, last town meeting, we appropriated close to two-point-five million dollars to just do the roof on that function facility. The costs associated with the funding of that roof and financing it over fifteen or twenty years is significant, and the revenue that we're generating annually from the lease or the license agreement that we have doesn't even cover the debt service for the roof, never mind the other maintenance and upkeep of the building.
Right.
So what we do right now is we're operating a function facility and a building there, basically subsidizing private enterprise to operate out of our building, it's costing us money.
Okay.
So it's from a cost-effectual standpoint, there's no return on the investment. Most of what we're looking at right now, and again, we're not in the function hall business, the town in North Reading doesn't run the function hall.
No.
We leased that out, and then someone pays us rent, basically, to do it.
So you have an entity that rents the?
We have no interest in being in the function hall business. We have seven-person volunteer committee that oversees this and one full-time in Polae. We're not going to be out there flipping burgers and serving turkey dinners. But anyway, so from a return on investment, it's not there anymore. It's not working. But I will defer to Mr. DeFranzo. Okay. So this is Lou DeFranzo, Hillview Commissioner. Lou, why don't you get up to the table?
All right, thank you.
Lou DeFranzo, two Ladies Slipper Lane. As Mr. O'Larry said, this is a decision that the commission came to not lightly or quickly. This is a decision that we came to after first investigating and coming before you to ask for some approval for bonding to redo the roof, which we were going to do, and we got into that project and got a project manager who started to quickly realize that we were spending the next ten years of the Hillview's wherewithal to do nice things for the community on essentially fixing a building and putting a Band-Aid on it, but just deferring the problem further down the road. As Mr. O'Larry has also said, the commission, which has the fiduciary duty to run the enterprise for the benefit of the town, you know, took a look at this, and essentially what we would have been doing is putting a Band-Aid on the enterprise by deciding to mortgage the next ten years or eight years of our financing by paying for a roof on a building that provides very limited utility anymore to this community, unfortunately. I've been in town since the early nineties, and I, too, when I first was confronted with the possibility of raising that building, had quite an emotional attachment to the fact that it was going to be demolished or eliminated. We don't have an obligation to replace that function facility, and we don't plan to build a function facility. Presently, the current operator, our licensee, runs about thirty events a year at the facility. About eight of those are community-related. Essentially, they use it as a storage facility, and, you know, we're tasked with making sure that it's weather tight and water tight, and that's a full-time job. We're spending about sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year on just putting Band-Aids to keep the water from penetrating the building. When you ask, how did we get there? I wish I could answer that, but I think it's forty years of owning a building, having four operators over the course of that time, and I think a lot of it is cultural and societal change, and what the utility of the building is and what it was, and what the return was. And, you know, at this point, they just, as Mr. O'Larry said, the committee looked into this, and when we started to really think long and hard about committing, you know, three million dollars of financing into that building, when we knew that we didn't have a bid of the last time we put the building out to be operated, we were quite concerned that we could be left with a three-million-dollar investment in a white elephant building that might have then had a roof on it, but would have needed a lot more work to bring it up to snuff. ADA, electrical, heating, plumbing, all of these systems were, are in need of tremendous repair. So we did hire a project manager. We were going down the route of making it weather tight and putting that money in the building, but just at some level, as we started to peel back the onion and realize what was entailed with making the building weather tight and potentially the roof being the tip of the iceberg, we decided that for the next generation of Hillview people that are going to run the commission and the enterprise to do the right things for the enterprise's purposes, that we would defer that and that we would investigate a demolition of the building, which would eliminate the need for us to spend the revenues that we are generating on a Band-Aid, which gives us very little utility. So that's, that's been the decision and the recommendation.
Yep, Mr. Studo.
So I just have a question on the cost of the roof. So after people in finance and lawyers, contractors in this town come a close third, and they've all asked me, because, you know, they all, they see it, and a lot is like private, but can you kind of just take us down the path of why it's a million roughly to tear it down? Or, yeah, like the request is a million between, just because it's, and again, it's all subjective until you see it, but it seems that from professionals, not me, because I don't do this for work, but for those that have done it, it seems like a very high number. And again, I'm not talking about people that, you know, posted that, you know, they can do this with a hundred thousand dollars and a hammer, but, you know, in reality, how did we come up with that number?
Are you asking about the number to demolish?
Yes.
Okay, we, we had a project manager, we retained a firm called Socatech with professional engineers, and we asked them to give us an estimate of what it would be to raise the building, what the cost would be. The cost came back as a professional opinion of approximately eight-hundred thousand dollars, putting a factor that we know that when we get into the project, there may be some excess. We're asking the town to authorize up to a million dollars for this demolition. Half million would be bonded, and we would fund the rest through our retained earnings.
Thank you. And it also includes not just having a big hole in the ground, but landscaping, landscaping the area afterwards.
Correct.
Colin Carr just fell on the floor. Mrs. Fillmore. Mrs. Fillmore first, then you, Chuck.
Just a quick question. I mean, they have all new, or a lot of new appliances in there, just all the kitchen downstairs, the stoves upstairs, what are they going to do with that? That's one question. And the house itself, the house itself is, to my knowledge, is still in good shape.
I'll speak to it, yeah.
Can they let the people be informed a little bit more and maybe put this off until October so that the whole town knows about it?
I, I would want to respond to that and say, first of all, on the equipment and what is salvageable, we'll obviously try to salvage whatever we can and get value of whatever we can. I think, if anything, when you raise that, that is more proof, if you will, or in support of the decision that we're recommending, because the prior operator invested, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars into that building with equipment that they abandoned and left because they couldn't make a go of it in that building, running it as a function facility. That is a tip-off, that we can't run it, and we may be left with someday not having an operator for that building. It's just, it's outdated. As to the historic aspect of the Holt home that was founded there, we actually met with Matt Page, who came in and looked at the building. The truth is that there really is, after all of these years and all of the projects to keep the building standing up, there's really very little, if anything, left of the original building. When you go down into the basement of the original building, over half of it is cinder block from the forties, fifties, post-World War II that had been put in to keep the building up. There are some old timbers, they're termite-ridden that are in the sills, but literally, as Matt walked around, he quickly concluded that really there's nothing there, and where the conversation went to, and I don't want to speak for him, was that he would stand up at town meeting and indicate that there's really, unfortunately, nothing left to preserve from the historical perspective, except for the fact that it is the site of the Holt home, and what we told him is that we certainly want to respect that, we want to mark that spot, we would be prepared to fund a monument, to make it an historic place and to commemorate what was there, but there's really nothing to salvage, unfortunately.
Mr. Karuji. Also a member of the Hillview Commission.
Charles Karuji, three Chester Street, a member of the Hillview Commission. And the reason I get up is not to interfere with Lou. In two thousand seventeen, I think it was, was the year we got all the snow, was that the year we had to pull all the snow off the roofs?
Fifty, two thousand fifty.
So downtown said, go up there and get the roof, get the snow off there. So what happened? They had snow blowers up there, they had shovels, they were digging all over the place. After that, the roof, shovels kept leaking, all right? You put a snow blower on the roof, you're in trouble.
That's why you don't put a snow blower on the roof.
Mr. Stack?
Of course you may. Hi, George Stack, a member of the Hillview Commission since nineteen eighty-eight and before that, member of the Study Committee in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven, which means I'm old and I'm tired. So when we took the property, it wasn't like buying a house. You didn't get an inspector, you didn't go in and look. We bought the building, we were in a state of shock. We had a six-point-something million dollar bond out that we had promised the town in North Reading would never end up on the tax rolls. We had to figure out a way to pay for that bond and at the same time, keep the building, which we were fortunate to get a vendor, it was seven bids, two were legitimate, and Burton Page owned the Colonial, which is now Marketplace, they owned a fleet of the Hilton Hotels. He came over to North Reading, brought about three hundred people with him, had a booming business, not profitable as far as we're concerned, but he had a booming business for about twenty years, and a lot of those people died off. In the meantime, we spent approximately, I'd say, a half, a million and a half dollars securing that building until we could pay off the first bonds, and the, that's when we found out there were, there were five roofs on that building. And I will not say it's seamless. We replaced part of the roof, we paid a lot of money to patch the roof, we brought company after company in that would tell us that they fixed the roof. But as you know, water finds its own place, and so we still fight it. Now, I'm Don Keody. I've been fighting the windmills for thirty-eight, nine years almost. I really believe somebody would come in and take that building over and run a legitimate business, run a function fit business, but the windmills won. It has absolutely never happened, never happened. In the past, after Mr. Page, we had, he was the only bidder, then he and Pat Lee from the Hill Hoshu bid, and Mr. Page got the bid, then Pat bid, he got the bid, and then we had no bidders. And one night I got a phone call that Mr. Yeeber was interested in taking over the facility, and it was basically an abandoned building. The town was considered an abandoned building. So he came in, we had to put in, and I hate to say this, but we had a three-hundred-dollar bond to put a kitchen in, and I didn't know where to put a kitchen in, because we had nobody there. But in conversations with certain people who are no longer here, we were forced to put a kitchen in for an empty building. We wanted to move the money out to the golf course. I got into big arguments with certain people, and never happened. We ended up putting in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar kitchen for an abandoned building. So fast forward, Mr. Yee believes we have nobody, then we hear this couple sitting next to Mr. Yeeber's wife at a function, they talk about the Hillview, and she says, he says, she says to her, oh, we left there, they're looking for somebody. So I got a phone call that these people are interested, and they come in, lovely people, that can't make the note, you know, you, and so the building, after thirty-nine years of my life, where I really thought somebody would come. come, and we've been discussing this for over a year and a half, and this is not the first commission group that has toyed about taking down the building. You'd have to change the electrical, you have to change the plumbing, you have to make it ADA accessible. We've, we've done all kinds of things, we've, we've dodged the bullet. And you would think after 39 years, I'd want to take something from that building, don't you? I just want to take a piece of the destruction and walk away, because it's, it's a great disservice to the town. And if it doesn't come down, and of course, that's going to be the, the role of the people at town meeting to decide. If they decide not to take it down, then we live with it. But if we don't take it down, it'll probably handicap future generations, and on the plaque that we have upstairs, oh, no, we're not there, are we? We're at Town Hall, aren't we? At the Hillview upstairs is a plaque that says in 1988, it's, it's our gift to future generations. And so I'm, I'm the end of the generations. Everybody else is gone. And, 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 and the point is, there's nothing, there's nothing there. And if you do it and you keep it, you're going to handicap this town from ever doing anything in the next probably 10 to 15 years with, with expanding the enterprise outside. So it'll be up to the people, but there's nothing left to it. And, and I was, it took me, they took me out kicking, you know, I really believed it was going to happen. So that's, that's the end. So I don't know what's going to happen at town meeting. I hope the people are sensible enough. Emotions can't rule this thing. Plus, I, I think most people that were around when it was, you know, Santa Claus and, and all those other things, I, I don't think they're around much anymore. So I hope sensible people step up and make a rational decision. Thanks.
Amy.
I just have a couple of questions. Last October, I believe we voted to approve $2 million to fix the roof, or a million dollars to fix the roof. What happens?
Two and a half.
What happens with that?
Two point five with this.
What happens with that?
It's still there.
It's never been drawn upon.
I understand that, but what's going to happen? It's going to, we're not going to borrow, it's just going to fall off, correct?
The filing warrant, articles, or something.
We sit authorization out.
Second question is, how much money do we have in our retained earnings for the Hillview? Is there a reason why we can't pay for this all, and we have to bond some of it?
It would exhaust all of our retained earnings, which we cannot do.
So do we have a balance of that amount?
I think it's about 1.2.
Yeah, it was 1.2 at the, at the end of last year.
Well, 1.2 million dollars, and generally, the commission retains at least one year's worth of debt service in retained earnings in cases of bad season.
So that retained earnings is all the golf money, the money that we're earning from golf and everything, correct?
All the, all the enterprise money.
All the, all the enterprise money, yeah.
Thank you.
Questions, concerns, comments? Mr. Watson.
John Watson, 3 Essex. I'm concerned about the old house. I know they say there's nothing left, but once it's gone, there is nothing left. And that house was built by Holt, 1790, he owned 1,000 acres in North Reading. He was a famous guy. And we're going to just knock it down? I went to that meeting and they said, then they were saying they put a million dollar kitchen in it, and they're just going to demolish it. It's like, I, are we that rich, that arrogant? Well, I don't get it. It's, it's a famous house. And that, if you look, it's, say, in the roof, the roof of the house is not screwed up, the roof of the house is nice and straight, by their recommend, by their whatever, 20 years ago, they jacked it all up and reinforced the foundation. The way it looks to me, the additions are all just tacked on. It's a historic house. We've knocked down a lot of historic crap in this town, we don't have that much left. It's in a nice spot. They said they tried to give it to the, the Historic Commission, but they didn't want it, but they wanted them to move it down to, by the Putnam House. Nobody's going to move that house, not down there. Well, I don't know, it just seems like it's a done deal. But it's, I know they've been deciding it for a year and a half, but they didn't tell anybody. They told us like two weeks ago, we read it in the paper, they're going to knock it down. And in the article, it says demolish the facility, doesn't say save the historic building. And that building is on, it's registered with the Mass Historical Commission. Do you think you can just knock it down? Doesn't seem right to me. I don't see how you can have a building that's registered on the commission and you just bulldoze it. Somebody?
It's not, it's not a registered historical site, it's noted as a regis, as a historical site, but it's not a protected site that we're restricted from demolishing at the enterprise. And I, I.
Does that make it right?
I would, well, I, I don't, I don't know the town can vote on that, we're just presenting the facts.
Not the way you got the thing written. The way you got the thing written, you demolish it.
It, John, the, through the chair, but yeah, that's true. The article in the warrant is to demolish.
Says demolish the facility.
Correct. And, and again, at that public hearing, you raised an issue along with Jackie Rook, you know, as far as, you know, hey, what about, what about saving it? They committed to looking into it and seeing what that may cost, as far as, because if you, if you commit to keeping it, you have to bring it up to ADA standards and all these other.
Right.
Codes that had.
But there are different, there are different criteria. There's different criteria for a historic building, though.
Yeah.
You don't have to bring it up to everything.
Yeah, I think the, I think the concern is, is that what is actually, you know, other than the facade, interior wise, there's been so many alterations, there's, there's not much left, if anything, you know, other than, you go upstairs in the attic and you can see the white nice white boards and things of that nature, but that there isn't much inside the facility itself that's historical in nature that can be salvaged or even refurbished. Yeah, but, and again.
I don't want to drive down North Street and see a rock.
I, I understand, no, I, I understand, I think they, they, they heard that too, and again, I don't know if you've gotten a, a quick snapshot from your project manager as to what it might cost to redo it, or to retain it?
We haven't gotten the exact quote yet, but what some of the information we've gotten from the building inspector and the project manager, who's a structural engineer as well, is that when the building was taken over in the 1920s, when it was bought out from the Holt's to the Middlebrook family, it was Harvey Kelch who came in and essentially gutted the entire house. The back half was hacked off, the side half was hacked off. All that's remaining is some foundation in the basement, in the front and the right corner. The beams in the basement have already been cut and notched away, there are termite specks all in the beams in the basement that have been supported by two-by-fours but not done correctly according to the structural engineers. When you go up to the main level, that is all 1980s, maybe 70s looking, all the floorboards are gone, everything has already been painted over. The building is vinyl siding, it has vinyl windows, it has asphalt shingles, the bricks on the chimney are not original bricks at all. In the attic, the beams in the attic, there are some nice beautiful beams that Mark Hall and Matt Page had looked at, and those are the types of things they're looking at salvaging. But nothing, very little inside the building is original because of the way that it was hacked off in order to add the function facilities on there, it needs a whole new structural entity just to keep it afloat.
It's not impossible, and everything doesn't have to make money.
It's not about.
It's not about just making money, though.
Mr. Studo.
It's also about the health of the enterprise and, and what the commitment of the enterprise would be going forward, and what the enterprise's purpose is to, you know, have the, to provide open space and fulfill its charter for the town.
Mr. Studo. So I think everyone can appreciate that, you know, it's been, it's been there a very long time, although up until this presentation a month ago and then some other info, I mean, I've been there for things, but if you told me, like, this is historical, I wouldn't be like, where? All the events, I went there, I mean, you know, the buyer's a nice white granite, I don't think they had that in 1920. That's not part of the house, though. No, but what I'm saying, though, is that from a cost perspective, so I've been on the board now, this is my sixth year, as the sky will be blue tomorrow, if we spend two and a half million and then request another million because we have to for something else in five years, I will guarantee, because I've seen it, that the super majority of those that don't want us to demolish will be saying, you should have done it. I'm not saying you, sir, but like, that will happen. The thing is that what's great about the year 2025 is you can't delete anything on the internet. So if you then try to change your mind and say, and say that, it's going to say, no, you said it right here. And that's my concern, that this doesn't seem like it's something, even if we spend, let's say we don't spend up to the two and a half, whatever that number is, but let's say we do even the bare minimum from what we have to do with ADA and all that, just the bare minimum, whatever that number is. I just, if then we have more problems with it and at the same time don't, I mean, 3,500 a month is, that's all we can get on something that big? I mean, like, you know, you can't rent a two-bedroom in Malvin for 3,500 a month. So you can't, not with, not with parking.
They pay, they pay the utilities as well as that rent, and they do have an override for their events where we do share some revenue, but it's.
But it's not a true triple net lease.
It's, it's, it's not, it's a license, number one, and, and on an economic basis, we don't make money. In fact, as we said, following COVID, we had nobody to operate that building, it was going to be mothballed. We were at the, at risk of having it deemed abandoned and, and possibly not having it being able to be insured, and it could have been condemned. It, it, it was at risk. And we got lucky and got an operator, so we took a license and took an operation. But as we look at it, essentially, if we decide that we want to make that place watertight, we're essentially funding a private business and we're not carrying out the purpose of the enterprise. And I agree with you, I think that years from now, if we, if we, if the town decides not to pass this, we will continue, as Mr. Page said, that, um, and Mrs. Stack said, we will continue to run that building, but at some point in the future, somebody on the commission is going to come here, and that it's going to become so obvious to the town, because the enterprise is going to be able to do nothing for the next 10 years if we invest in that building with no return.
And I'll just, again, my bigger thing is that it's going to need more money, we know that, okay? And all I hear 100 times a day is about the town always asks the money to do things, okay? And I'm going to have very little, very little sympathy for those voices when they don't want to spend more money. Because that's the other problem in general that I feel we have with a lot here, it's that, again, I understand, like, especially if it's something deemed or can look historical, but like, the fact of the matter is, I've seen firsthand what the, what the enterprise has funded since I've been here in town, and the idea that we wouldn't have those assets, the first thing I'm going to see online, mismanagement. No one's going to say, no, the town decided to throw good money after bad. Nope, it was that, just, ah, if we only had volunteers that were smarter.
And, and as Mr. Stack said, that this is for also what the enterprise was formed for, and it has done some great things for this town, some fantastic things, Ipswich Tram Park being the primary one, right? We all benefit from that. We want to do more as a commission. If we don't take this step, and we're saddled with financing this building for the next 10 years, plus what you're pointing out, the additional costs that are likely to come, that would need to be paid, that then may not be allowed to be funded, we're jeopardizing the enterprise, and it will end up on the tax rolls if it doesn't go the right way. I don't want to be a fear monger, but that's a possibility. This is the step of responsibility to preserve the long-term life of the enterprise and what we've done. This is the hard step.
Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, just my, my own two cents is either take it all down or don't take anything. I think trying to keep that portion is going to cost you millions of dollars to jumpstart and then to maintain 100 grand a year. I mean, it's just, I'm just thinking, trying to cut those buildings off and keep that historic, it's going to be an absolute nightmare. So my two cents, I, I, I know it means a lot to a lot of people, I'm just thinking, investment wise, you know, that.
Forget it.
Lou, you know, I, I've changed my mind on this a little bit, so I, I think, I appreciate your efforts, and thank you for what you guys are doing.
Mr. Stack.
I think the reality is that the understanding of the Hillview has to be that it's a finite operation, it's not infinite. We, we have income that comes in, sounds like a lot of money, but out of that money comes the management fee and the upkeep of all the properties. We just upgraded the golf course, cost us a million dollars, had to bring it up, we haven't really done it since we took the property the way we did now. But more importantly, that there's only so much money. I've been through two droughts, and the worst thing you can have for a golf course are droughts. And we had two droughts since I've been on the commission, and the play just disappears. Nobody wants to play on sand. We had to buy water, we attempted to buy water, that didn't work out either. So it's a very fragile, I always said, it's a very fragile project. I hope it continues the way it is, it'll only do that way with good business acumen, good people who understand that you can't get everything. We've had many people come to us about projects that were rejected, because it, it didn't make sense, it wasn't for the whole community, and it didn't fit our budget. So when people think of it, you have to understand, there's only, it's only, it's like running a house. You have a budget, you stay within it. If you go beyond it, you get in trouble. And we don't use credit cards, okay?
Can you just consider getting a golf cart girl? Can you just consider getting a golf cart girl?
He wants a beer cart.
I, I have to tell you, there's an open drinking law in the town of North Reading.
Of course there is.
It's illegal to drink in public in North Reading, okay? We've been through this, we've had police up to the Hillview. The worst crowd we ever had were, were, were the judges that we banned from the Hillview because they were drinking, never to come back. Imagine us banning judges? But we did, and we told them never to come back, because we have open drinking laws in town.
Do we control that? Can you take a poll back now?
Well, it's by law. Town meeting.
He's got, he's got an email in his inbox about it.
Town meeting.
Mr. Karuji.
The one thing, Charles Karuji, 3 Chester Street, I'm probably the oldest one in here that's been around since the Hillview has been there. And just a funny story was Harvey Kelch chased me up the street when I was 10 years old, and he says, you stealing golf balls off my golf course. Here I am, a 10-year-old kid. But anyways, I always try to insist that some downtown people come and see the Hillview.
First when they come on the board.
Mr. Watson, I, I invited him to come up to the Hillview. I called him to come to the Hillview, never returned my call. I wanted them to see what was in the building. Do not look at papers. Come in, look at the building, then let me know, talk about it. But don't talk about it if you haven't been in there. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions in relation to the article relating to Hillview? There are none. All right, I thank you very much, commissioners and Lou. Appreciate it very much. Karen, thank you. Article 22, rescind authorization to borrow. Mr. Gavero.
Mr. Chairman, through you, as was mentioned, any final decisions will be determined prior to or at town meeting. Specifically, if Article 21 is approved, then I believe that the proposal will be to rescind the authorization for borrowing for the roof project, as was funded at October town meeting in the fall. Both the Select Board and Finance Committee stated they would offer their recommendations at town meeting.
So again, the only thing that's under consideration for a rescinding authorization is the Hillview roof. So again, that would be contingent upon the previous article. Any other comments or questions in relation to Article 22, rescind authorization to borrow? Article 23, appropriate or transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
As I mentioned earlier, this is a reserve account that pays for the future health and care costs for our retirees. The balance is 4.5 million dollars, and the article proposes to raise and appropriate $425,000 in accordance with our fiscal year 2026 financing plan. It's been recommended both by the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Any questions, comments in relation to Article 23? There are none. Article 24, fund fiscal year 2027 revaluation.
This will be funding for the required revaluation of real estate in town as mandated under the general laws. The funding required for this is being requested as $150,000 to be funded from the overlay reserve, which has been released by the assessors. It's recommended both by the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
And again, this has to be done periodically, I forget what the timeframe is, in five, three years? Every three years, the building's property has to be reevaluated. Again, the assessors.
Again, the assessors do a great job of trying to update it on an annual basis, but, uh, by law has to do it, uh, every three years. And again, the money is coming from the overlay reserve account, which is already money that's been appropriated and sitting there. So, it's just coming out of that account. Any further questions or discussions in relation to reval? Hearing none. Article twenty-five, fund retirement obligations.
This would fund, uh, obligations for retiring employees for any compensation that they are owed upon retirement. And the funding is proposed to be two-hundred thousand dollars from free cash. Recommended both by the Select Board and by the Finance Committee.
Any further questions or discussions in relation to Article twenty-five? Hearing none. Article twenty-six, fund town building repairs.
This would fund improvements and repairs to various municipal buildings and the amount proposed is fifty thousand dollars to be funded by free cash. Uh, it's an annual article that we use for project-related work at town buildings. Um, and it is recommended both by a vote of the Select Board and by the Finance Committee.
And most of these is a small amount of money, fifty thousand dollars, but it's to, again, address certain situations that we're aware of and also unanticipated stuff that comes up throughout the year, so we don't have to go back to town meeting to address certain issues. And the, uh, for the questions or discussion in relation to Article twenty-six? Hearing none. Article twenty-seven, prior year bills.
We still have none, none anticipated at this time. Uh, there have been years where we've come into town meeting with the prior year bullets come up, so we hold that open for a recommendation at town meeting. Hopefully, that won't be the case this year.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions related to no prior year bills yet? Hearing none. Article twenty-eight, authorize the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements.
This is an article that allows the treasurer to enter into agreements with the banks, um, for servicing of accounts, uh, where payment comes from a portion of the interest earnings in exchange for their services rather than to have an appropriation, um, to pay directly for the services. And it's been recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. It's a routine, um, article. It'll be asked town meeting to approve each year in accordance with state law.
Any questions or comments in relation to Article twenty-eight? Hearing none. Article twenty-nine, exact mass general law, chapter two-hundred A, section nine A, tax title foreclosure procedures.
So, there's been a lot of work on this art, on, on this matter in recent years with regard to the issue of, um, tax title foreclosures and where the funds go for that. This is a local acceptance statute that provides an alternative process where if we dispose of abandoned or unclaimed, um, to, to deal with any abandoned or unclaimed funds that are held by the town. Uh, if we accept a statute, the unclaimed and abandoned funds will ultimately remain with the town as opposed to go into the Commonwealth, which is what would happen if we do not comply with the notice procedure set forth in the statute. We've been advised by town council to consider accepting this statute. We look back at our records and indicated that we have not yet accepted it at this point in time. Um, so this is an action that we are recommending occur, recommended both by the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Any questions or comments in relation to Article twenty-nine? Article thirty, select town officers.
Articles thirty and thirty-one, um, town officers and hearing and acting on the reports of town officers and committees. The routine articles, uh, are recommended by the Select Board and for no action required by the Finance Committee for thirty or, uh, thirty-one.
Any questions or comments?
Sorry, Mr. Larry. Um, any expected, um, any expected action on Article thirty?
First selection of town officers.
Any, any expected, or is this going to be-
Only a vote. So, we're, we're seeking approval from town meeting that for any position for which the, uh, statute, the town's, the state law or the town's bylaws or charter do not prescribe who is to author, who is to appoint the position, we're seeking authorization from town meeting that it be designated as a select board, which is what we do each year. It's not, um, position-specific. It's purely for the positions for which no appointing authority has been determined. Um, and at this point in time, to my knowledge, I'm not sure that they're already. Uh, I think that, that over the years, we would develop either through bylaw, charter, or state law identifying who the appointing authority is. But in the event something comes up where that's a question, this would make clear. It's this Select Board. Thank you.
Article thirty-one, hearing and act on town reports, town officers and committees.
It's an opportunity for our officers and committees to make a report to town meeting. I'm sure they have something that's not, um, specific to a warrant article that's on here. Um, I don't, I don't, can't think of anything that's come up as a report that may come in, um, from a board. Oh, I see.
Taxation committee.
Taxation committee, okay. So, at least one. And it's open, you know, we just would ask if there's a board committee or officer, um, who's looking to make a report that they advise. Consider that the town moderator know. They could let me know and I can let the town moderator know. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments in relation to Article thirty-one? Well, if we can get through this as quickly, good town meeting on Monday night, then we're good. We turn by eleven o'clock. Now, special town meeting. Folks, it's good.
Did you close out the presentation too quickly?
I want to give everyone a heads up. There's going to be two, two nights.
So, again, so we finished the, uh, annual town meeting, again, which is thirty-one articles. Uh, if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, the Select Board, um, authorized the calling of a, uh, special town meeting to convene at seven oh-five P.M., which is five minutes after the regular annual town meeting convenes, uh, in order to consider one article. And the article is to for the acquisition and appropriation for ninety-seven Main Street, which is the old Stop and Shop building and the, uh, the, uh, job lot, currently housed with a gas station. Uh, over the last few months, the public is aware that, um, through conversation, we had conversation and, uh, discussions with, uh, representatives from Stop and Shop, asking them to provide us with an opportunity to, um, engage with them, potential purchase of this particular parcel of land. Board is unanimous in, uh, pursuit of the discussions and trying to convince Stop and Shop to provide us with this opportunity. Again, while we didn't have, you know, do not have any specific plans yet for this particular property, the, the sale of it and the availability of it is limited. And we look upon this along with the planning commission and, and others, that, um, this is an opportunity that we may not want to pass up on. It doesn't appear at this particular time that we're going to have that opportunity to purchase it outright from Stop and Shop. They apparently have someone else who is interested in purchasing it and they're apparently going to be entering into a, uh, purchase and sales agreement with another party. That being said, um, the board is still concerned with, um, what's going to happen there. And we don't know. We don't know who the, uh, would be purchased to, is yet, who the parties are and what their plans are. As we stated earlier, we're looking at this particular pro, property as a keystone to economic development and redevelopment in, on the Route twenty-eight corridor. If we're not going to have control of it, we certainly want to have some input. So, we, unless there's some discussions that take place between now and next Monday, we may still be coming to town meeting, seeking authorization for, um, acquisition. And that acquisition at this particular juncture would be through eminent domain taking. But again, it depends upon who the new owner is and what the proposals are and how much they're willing to engage with us. We may also, at the same time, move to just pass over the article and move on and provide you with an update. Whatever update we have will provide you at town meeting. And if we decide to pass it over, uh, in June, depending on what we hear or what we don't hear, uh, we may be coming back to the town, take a look at the, the eminent domain taking, uh, again, option, either in a special town meeting or in October. But we don't have any clear-cut plans yet. All we know is this parcel is available. It's a keystone to economic development and we're certainly in a better, if we're in a position where we can control what's going to happen there rather than reacting to what someone else is looking to do, um, partnering with part of the enterprise, potentially. That's always a better situation. Again, that opportunity has not been presented to us of our Stop and Shop at this particular juncture. There are risks associated with eminent domain taking as far as what the costs are going to be. This, there is less risk because the price will have been established and an arms-length transaction through disinterested third parties. So, fair market value of the property will have been established and we'll know, we'll know more once the transaction takes place. So, full transparency, um, it doesn't appear as though we're going to have an opportunity to ask you to purchase it for a particular price. And until we have more information from the sellers and the new buyers, um, we have nothing else to report at this point. So, we may very well move to pass over or we may ask you to consider the authorization to allow the board to take away the domain if we don't think it's in the town's best interest what is going to be proposed. We have no further information at this point. So, we'll report Monday, uh, what we know or what we don't know and then we'll lay out what other potential actions we may feel we need to take. Yeah. Any questions, comments? Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, Mr. Atkinson, eighty-two Elm Street. Um, so you don't have a firm handle on the cost and you may have to take-
We do have, we do have an idea, but again, it's not, it hasn't been disclosed yet.
Okay. You're going to have a better idea at town meeting next week.
Potentially.
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 Almost seems like it would make sense to pass it over until next Oc, until next October.
It may.
Uh, but with that being said, and of course, we've already discussed the potential, if the town does acquire the property, it could be a site for a future fire station or for some other town use. Uh, nothing definite there either. Just on your sense or the sense of the board, what are the, what's the pers, the odds that this will happen?
I think the odds are extremely high that transfer ownership of this property is going to take place shortly.
The question is-
My guess is, I, 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 this particular juncture, I don't believe it's going to be transferring to the town of North Reading.
Okay. So, in other, in other words, this is sort of a precautionary move in case it does become available.
There's a, there's a P and S agreement that if it hasn't already been executed, it will be executed within the next week.
Do we know who the buyer is?
We do not at this particular, it has not been disclosed to us.
Okay. We won't know until the sale actually takes place.
Right. And, and there has been a, an offer to try and get the parties, you know, the town of North Reading, to meet the new potential buyers to discuss what their plans might be. And of course, we're going to take advantage of that conversation and opportunity to hear what it is.
Okay.
And then we'll weigh in as to what we think of their proposals.
I can see a large number of opportunities. I can also see a large number of pitfalls. I'm not for or against at this point. I just don't think there's enough data to make a good decision right now. With that being said, I'm hoping we get more data before we have to make a decision.
Me too.
And if postponing a decision allows us to get the data we need, then I'm all for that. But, uh-
But again, you know, you, you, depending upon, if a conversation takes place in the next week or so, we'll know more.
Okay.
If it doesn't, then we'll know that we haven't got enough information yet and that, uh, I just want to put the public on notice that depending upon what the proposals are to do with the property, we're extremely concerned.
Yeah. Um, will we, uh, assuming we have, we still don't have much more information next week and we pass over, is there a strong, uh, strong possibility we could, again, that this is sort of a boilerplate or, um, provisional article that could come up again in October?
Again, the, the Select Board, in our infinite wisdom, can call for a special town meeting at any particular point in time or we can put it on just the regular warrant article for October.
Okay.
Depending upon the timing and what the, how the discussions go.
So, in a lot of ways, this resembles the sewer debate where we were being proactive based on information we had and when the circumstances changed, it all went away.
There you go.
So, it's the sort of the same thing.
Just a lot less expensive.
Yeah, a lot less expensive.
Lot less expensive, but still, still a lot chump change.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions in relation to the special town meeting warrant article number one? So, with that then, I guess we've completed the public hearing on, uh, the annual town meeting and the special town meeting and I thank you for your patience, your input and your comments. And with that, we can now, the board, uh, we have some, uh,
Steve.
housekeeping business in relation to the remaining, um, votes on the annual warrant or special town meeting warrant. If we want to, uh, change our recommendations or authorize some other additional recommendations on one that, that we haven't offered recommendations on, we have the opportunity to do so now. In relation to, uh, articles one, two, and three, this is more in you were not present at the time when we originally took it and what was printed in the warrant. We wanted to make sure that we had, uh, an opportunity to inform the public as best we could as to what the position of the board was at the time, which is what we did and printed in the warrant. So, if you, if the board's wishes are, we can, uh, entertain a motion to make recommendations on articles one, two, and three.
Wait, what are, what are we doing here?
What's that?
What are we doing here?
I'm sorry. Didn't understand.
He's asking what, what we're doing.
Are we taking recommendations on articles one, two, and three?
If we want to, if we want to move our recommendations, what the recommendation of the board is going to be for town meeting next week, we're going to make up the board.
We already did that, Steve.
We did that based upon the-
Leanne Gonzalez.
Right. I understand.
So, you're just going to throw her vote away? I mean-
No, 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 no. No, no. We, again, we can report to the board, we can report to the board that, uh, the town meeting-
Mr. Chairman, point of, point of order.
What is your point of order?
The town of North Reading has been doing this for years and you're going to change it right now for what? This board has already voted on articles, so I'm very confused at why you're trying to re-vote.
No, we have revoked. We have revoked recommendations for town meeting, from the printing of the warrant to town meeting. This board has changed it numerous times on recommendations.
So, what's the, so why change it now, though? I'm trying to understand.
So, that the reflection of what the current makeup of the board, we can report what it was at the time of the printing of the warrant and we can report it what it is now. So, why are you opposed to that?
Last year I went, there's no, that, last year I went to town meeting and that's exactly how it was, was I didn't vote on any of the articles that were above me. What's the point of revoting?
Inform the public?
No. What's the point of revoting? This board has already voted.
We voted based upon-
Point of order. This is not right.
What's your point of order?
So, you're just going to throw Le-
I'm going to the bathroom. Should you guys talk like-
No, 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 no. So, anyway, so we have that, and, Mr. Gilbert, do we have any other articles?
Wait, you just throw Leanne's votes out?
Do we have any other articles that we have not made a recommendation on that we feel we're in a position to do so this evening?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. Good. All right. And then as far as the recommendations for town meeting, they were all unanimous with the exception of articles one, two, and three?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay. So, it's a, it's a will of the board.
No, no, I'm not taking you.
Well, you don't have to.
I don't take that.
You're one member of five. If you wish to do so. If you don't wish to do so, that's fine too.
I'll let Leanne, I'll let Leanne know what you're doing.
Pardon me?
I said, "I'll let Leanne know what you're doing."
Well, please do. Let, give her a call down and help. So, again, I don't know what the wishes of the board, board members are in relation to the recommendations to be made at town meeting on those that are- And again, I don't know if you've changed your mind on any of the articles as far as unanimously supporting the rest of them?
There is not one article in the town meeting warrant that has changed a recommendation from recommendation to non-recommended. You're insulting Leanne. This is not right.
I'm not insulting Leanne at all.
You're changing your, I don't know, I don't know why you're changing it.
And again, it's-
Something's on your agenda. It'll come up. It's all right.
I have no agenda. I'll do it within the public's interest.
Don't worry about it. It's all right. It's come up.
Anyway, so, uh, we'll wait for Mr. Studo to come back to see what the wishes of the board are in relation to any changes of recommendations. If there's no willing to do so or desire to do so, that's fine. I understand. So, Mr. Studo, the question before the board members is whether or not we wish to, uh, revisit articles one, two, and three and modify any recommendations that may have been made. And while we can reflect at the town meeting what it was at the time of the printing of the warrant, we may be able to also recommend, uh, whatever the current status is with the current makeup of the board. Uh, Mr. Massey is opposed to, to doing that. I just said it's up to the wishes of the, the rest of the board as to whether or not we want to do that and report to the town meeting what the, what the board's recommendations are in these articles. Do you have a feeling one way or the other?
I mean, really, in, in, in the interest of just like time and making those, unless it's going to shift, like the vote, I don't think it's necessary. My, my vote's not going to change. So, unless it was going to shift three to two the other way, like I, you know, I think we can keep it like this, but, you know, my vote's not going to change either way of what it was the first time. So, that's my opinion. Because right now, I don't think we need to do it, you know, to go from three to two to whatever it could be because I don't know what Ms. Murren's going to vote for. Uh, so, I, if I thought it would shift, I'd have a bigger, stronger opinion. Like, if any, if any of these articles, I think, would go from like the last board said three, two, one way and one, three, two, the other way, I'd be more inclined to say, "Let's do it," but I, I'm indifferent to the idea of it's- and one, three, two, the other way, I'd be more inclined to say, "Let's do it," but I, I'm indifferent to the idea that it's not gonna shift.
Mr. Waller, you have any feelings one way or the other, or Ms. Warren, do you wish to have your position acknowledged?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's fine to leave it the way it is. I think the town knows how Catherine would vote, if she was voting, so look at it.
Right.
I think it's fine.
That's right.
I don't think that'll be the issue.
So it seems the consensus is to leave it as it is. Is that fine?
Yes.
All right, so no other articles? Again, no one else has changed their mind as far as unanimous support on all the other articles? So be it. Board member reports. Let's start with, uh, Mr. Massey.
Sure. Um, a few things. One is the Fire Station Building Committee update. The Fire Station Building Committee has narrowed our choices of design firms from seven down to four, in which we are bringing four to an interview. Those interviews were supposed to be held this week. However, we are pushing it to, um, the eighteenth of June. There were some availability issues with some of the team members of the design firms. So we wanna make sure it's, it's best for North Reading to, you wanna see the whole team in front of you. You wanna see who you're going to be working with, especially principal level people. So we changed some things around and we will be having those interviews on the eighteenth. Services would start upon successful contract negotiations if town meeting passes it on July first. And a lot of good, good work there by the selection committee. Myself, Dave Rudloff, Todd Wokel, our OPM, and Don Stats. The other one was public comment, which was eliminated tonight. I think, I was a little confused. I think there's a lot of people that were a little bit concerned as to why public comment was eliminated tonight. So I'm not sure if you had any reason to remove it tonight compared to every other agenda I've been a part of?
Yeah, like, it's a, after eleven o'clock at night, I looked at the agenda and everything we're gonna talk about. If anybody had any comments, we're gonna be talking about every article in the warrant, the budget, multitude of different issues. Anything other than that at this particular time, I didn't think was gonna be significant enough to address at eleven, eleven-thirty at night.
Outside of public hearings, can you commit to having public comment on every meeting except virtuals and, you know what I mean?
I will determine that on a week, on a month, a month or meeting to meeting basis.
Thank you.
Depending upon the agenda and depending upon what, uh,
I appreciate that.
What we have to deal with.
Uh, last is-
They also had a request to do two meetings, so.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I get it. Tonight wouldn't have been the night to start with the two.
Yeah, no, no.
The last one I wanna talk about is a board of health regulation that started yesterday regarding, um, plastic straws and plastic bags. This was a board of health decision for all businesses, and I put my quotes because there are certainly businesses, and I mean corporations, who are not following that. You know, my opinion is that I'd like for the board of health to come and sit down with us and have a public hearing and hear from the residents and hear from the businesses here in town. I think not only does it have an impact on the businesses, but there's a practicality to it of removing plastic straws. Um, you know, uh, one very quickly, just to explain that, um, I'm sorry, I can't hear, there's a lot of- A lot of talk in the background. So, um, but the public straws, uh, they're public straws, plastic straws. You can go to the next town, drink out of a plastic straw, doesn't matter. Paper straws disintegrate into a drink, so if we wanna talk health hazards, um, that would be one to talk about. So I'd like this board to support having a public hearing with the board of health for residents and businesses to come in and explain. The reason why I say public hearing is because, um, this is a major impact on the community that they took no feedback from. Just a board of three who maybe think they have their own power and they wanna change things their own way, but that's three people. And I know, Mr. O'Leary, you don't like a town meeting, but not a lot of people show up to make votes, so I think this is a great example to get a little bit more input from the community. I certainly know that all the businesses here in town rely on that and they would be here. So, uh, that's my thoughts, and I'd like to get my board members' thoughts on that as well.
Let me respond. Since I've been liaison to the board of health for a couple of years anyway, or maybe a little more, actually probably about five years now. The board of health, first of all, was, well, probably two or three years ago, reacted to what was in the recycling committee's recommendations to address polystyrene, polystyrene and, and-
One guy.
No, it wasn't one guy. Excuse me. You weren't here. You weren't part of the discussions?
I got phone calls. I, I'm also, I'm, 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 I'm debriefed. I'm debriefed on the issue. And that one guy, that one guy-
Excuse me, that's nothing-
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean, I shouldn't have interrupted you.
Are you done with your comments? And I will respond appropriately.
There was one gentleman who I, so let me, I guess I'll finish.
Was a strong advocate and was chairman of the recycling committee?
Yep, yep. So he came down with this, he came down with this regulation.
You're telling me something where you weren't involved with it?
Steve, you just asked me if I'm done talking. I said, "No, hold on." So let me finish.
You weren't involved, so tell-
Oh, now I'm done. Go ahead.
Tell me a version of what occurred. What?
I don't know. I wonder, I'm not sure.
Would you like me to explain what occurred?
Sure. That one guy who set that regulation is now out of town and he's changing our whole town. That's what I'm saying. So it's unfortunate.
He didn't change the whole town. So anyway, the recycling committee was proposing a warrant article to go before town meeting to address polystyrene along with straws and bags and a whole host of other things.
Mm-hmm.
And again, with the support of the recycling committee, proposing a warrant article, they did not consult with the board of health at the time, who would be charged with regulating and enforcing the bylaw. So a discussion took place in order to determine, you know, what is it the recycling committee was looking to do? Did they recognize what the constraints were and what the responsibility would be of the board of health? Those discussions took place. The warrant article was never placed on the warrant. They agreed to work together on trying to come up with some sort of addressing the situation.
Mm-hmm.
The board of health endorsed the proposal and what was being proposed. The concern of the board of health's part was depending upon how far they went. And again, they had the opportunity and the option under state law to provide these guidances, the board of health guidance and regulations, without going to town meeting and doing so. They decided to opt into doing this procedure because it provides them with the opportunity to see how the enforcement is going, whether or not the change is needed to be made, and it's much easier to do it through the regulatory methodology, which they're empowered to do by state law. And that's why they were implementing it. This took place over the last two years probably, a year and a half to two years. There was public hearings on it. There was an intern that was hired over the summertime who talked to every restaurant tour and person, business that was gonna be affected by it, educated as to what it was, had them sign off that they got the information, they understood the information and understood how the regulation was gonna be implemented and the dates associated with it, which was when it took effect January first of this particular year, with a six-month time period and additional time period to use up inventory so that nobody was gonna be out any money and have to get rid of anything. So they're taking a very measured approach in doing so and implementing it. It was done, they had public hearings at their, at their own meetings, invited the public, advertised them, and informed the public and the businesses that were going to be impacted. So everybody was well aware of it. So as far as, you know, public hearings, they've had their public hearings, you know, and they've had their, and they've implemented it and it's within their authority to do so. And again, you talk about straws. It's more than straws. Yes, sir.
You know who else had a lot of public hearings? CPC on the MBTA.
So what's your point? Yeah, yeah, they had a lot of public hearings. You know what they did? They changed their mind and they voted for to one to support it.
Hey, people changed their mind. They wanna come here, they wanna talk about plastic straws. We should invite them.
And again, it's just starting to be implemented.
I'm just curious. Hey, Mr. O'Leary, this is not a big, major thing. I'm asking-
You're right, I agree.
Would you be interested in having the board of health come and sit down with us and allow the residents to come in here and talk about it?
Personally, no. Let the thing run its course and let us, let us see how it's gonna be working. It's just starting to be implemented.
There are a lot of people-
There are a lot of people.
That do not like that.
Don't like what? Regulations?
That do not like this. I'm telling you.
They don't like regulations. Oh, I understand. There's a group of people that don't like regulations.
Yeah.
They don't like, you're worried about plastic straws. I agree. This is not a big issue. I don't think we should be wasting our time on this right now. The board of health has done an excellent job. They've done it very transparently. They did it over an eighteen-month time period and you just happen to disagree. So I, entirely up to the board, but I don't, personally, I, I think the board of health has done an excellent job of notifying the public, notifying the businesses and establishments that are gonna be affected, that have been affected by it and are affected by it, and they're gonna be now measuring the ability of enforcement.
Why are you defending the board of health though? Why are you defending the board of health?
Why am I defending the board of health? Because first of all, I'm their liaison.
Great people.
I'm their liaison.
That set regulations and changed the entire town.
And there are volunteers in this community too that are being attacked right now with a, a small piece of information. You went somewhere who complained about their straws are going away.
Well, no, I, I talked to the director, but I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, that's good. So anyway, personally?
Good for me?
I have no-
What is wrong with you?
What, what is wrong with me? I brought up the straws. You brought up the straws. Let it be open. Anyway, the rest of the board, do you have any feelings as far as requesting, as people in the audience with the board of health and having them come here?
I think we should start, start grasping at straws.
That's a good one. So, I mean, personally, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's, I think, I also, I also think it's an insult. But that's my own personal opinion and up to the rest of you. Mr. Waller?
Let's move on.
Ms. Warren?
I personally think single-use plastic should not be a big priority for us and I think we should try to get away from it. It's an environmental issue. I don't think we need to hear from the board of health. And there's a state law that says we can be phasing away from plastic utensils in general. I think we should keep this as a pilot and keep going.
Mr. Studo?
I have no comments on straws.
Okay, so we'll move on. Anything else, Mr. Massey? That's it?
That'll do it, Mr. O'Leary.
Pardon me?
That'll do it, Mr. Chu.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Studo?
Okay, so-
We'll take reports on new business together.
Yep. Um, I know we've been arguing about MBTA and all this, but I'm actually gonna talk about something that will impact the town, is for real and is coming to a theater in UU.
Twenty Elm.
Paper straws.
Twenty Elm Street. So, uh, there was a hearing last week, just to kind of-
Not a hearing.
Not a hearing, excuse me. A meeting, just let the ZBA know the process, kind of how we're gonna do it. Uh, the first actual hearing is June twenty-sixth. They haven't set yet where. Now, just a little bit of a background, why this is the most important thing, 'cause this is reality. This is not just seventeen hours of what-ifs about the MBTA and what will and will not do. 'Cause this, I can tell you what will it do. So we challenged Mr. Yaba at Twenty Elm Street wanting to put a two-hundred-unit development. We challenged them, we got safe harbor, then we went to the ELOHC.
Housing Appeals Committee.
Correct, and we lost. Came back to the town. Pretty much in a nutshell, the developer coming in has a approved permit for two hundred units at Twenty Elm, where Teresa Restaurant is. And that is nothing we can stop. However, there's a hearing. They have it. And the first one through the ZBA is on June twenty-sixth, where the ZBA will review the application and make any requested changes. I say this is the most important because we're focusing on a lot of things that we can somewhat try to control to minimize the effects on the town. This one here, there is no control. And there will be no lawyer in shining armor, even the ones that get paid a lot more than KP Law, that's gonna be able to save us from it. So I suggest that this is where the town in general, if you wanna be informed of something that's gonna impact everything from traffic to schools to everything, that we start focusing back here. Because we did get a short-term reprieve on August nineteen, uh, excuse me, on August twenty, nineteen, but now it's coming back. So I just wanna, you know, divert attention to the community back to this. Um, and, you know, it's something where, you know, just everyone knows the zoning board of appeals is an independent kind of thing. So meaning, just like anybody else, it's appointed by the select board, but the select board is not the one who is going to be hearing this, all right? It's going to be the zoning boards of appeal to make their recommendations. But their first hearing is June twenty-sixth. They haven't announced yet where, right, Mr. Gilberto?
I believe it's gonna be nice.
Yeah, because there's, there's gonna be too many people for this room.
Oh, yeah.
So I would, you know, 'cause that's something that's going to, all of these questions are gonna get asked like they were last time in twenty-nineteen, 'cause a lot of people weren't there. And there were major concerns and, and there's gonna, we'll do the, you know, the ZBA will do what they need to do and then we'll go through there. But I would definitely encourage that the town's focus would be on that, not some of the other items that we've been arguing over the last eighteen months. Thank you.
Ms. Warren, have anything yet? You haven't had any assignments yet, but you've had your first couple of weeks and-
I got my assignments. I'm very excited about it.
Good.
I don't have any new business. I do have a question, if I may.
Uh-huh.
Who are the four firms that were shortlisted for the fire department?
Uh, you can go right to the fire station. I have the partner website.
And where is that meeting? 'Cause that's also on the website.
Hmm?
And the meeting location is also on the website.
The meeting, okay.
Yeah, the June eighteenth interviews. Is that a public interview?
No.
Put a subcommittee to review them. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Mr. Waller?
Okay, briefly, um, the, I mentioned this just a minute ago. The seniors means tested tax exemption is now available. If you qualify for your twenty-twenty-four circuit breaker match and you have a credit, you should come to the assessor's office and apply for a matching, um, a fifty percent match of that credit. There's a few criteria that goes along with it. There's some age restrictions. You have to be a resident for at least ten years here and not have liquid assets beyond two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. But for most people, they'll qualify and it's a way of reducing your property taxes and will help to underwrite, um, our senior citizens who are most financially vulnerable from having to leave our town. And the deadline for this is August first for this fiscal year coming up. So you have to apply by August first in order to get it. So we're gonna try to get the word out as much as we can. I'll do this at the town meeting. We're gonna be putting out flyers. We're gonna advertise it everywhere we possibly can because I think probably you have experienced, people don't even apply for their circuit breaker match on their taxes. We need to get the people to do that and also apply for this exemption. Because it's a great, it's a great offer by the town to help out the people, but if they don't take advantage, it's not gonna happen. Next, I mentioned this before, on June twelfth, um, the Commission on Disability and the North Reading CPAC and the North Reading Police Department are doing seven to eight o'clock at Flint Memorial Library, keeping our, our autistic loved ones safe this summer. And basically, that's about eloping, um, leaving your home, wandering. I believe there was a notice just recently that someone in town was lost. The police had to go look for them. This is a real issue, especially during the summer, so I encourage you to go to that for anybody who might be affected. The Sustainability Committee continues to make progress, very active people. In the transcript, you always see the little articles, little tidbits, if you will, of information about how to improve on sustainability. They also made it into The Readings, which is a magazine, very high glossy magazine. Lot of ads, but in the back there, they had, the North Running Sustainability Committed, committee had hosted its inaugural Sustainability Fair, early birthday celebration on Saturday, April twelfth, at the Flint Memorial Library. And again, this group is very active, very proactive in making things happen and putting themselves out there for community education, which is the best way to do that issue. And the last thing I have is, um, we've been trying to, with the Forest Committee, trying to get Swan Pond Trails opened up for the town. We've been going round and circles with accessibility issues and we have all these different bureaucracies that are telling us all these different things. So a little proud of myself. I actually read through all the, um, all the documents. You know, one of the major influences, there's a forest- You know, one of the major influences, there's a Forest Service Accessibility Guidelines and Requirements. That's always kind of in the background of something we have to comply with. And then there's the Accessible, um, uh, sorry, uh, Architectural Access Board gives out regulations. That's a national standard, and then a local standard is the MAAB. And so, when I read through the Forest Service, um, guidelines, basically, it's a legal requirement if it's a national forest, but it's a guideline if it's, you're adopting it for your own purposes. So, we don't, we want to adopt what STAG is saying, but we don't have to. Meanwhile, the AAB, it's a legal requirement that you comply, but at the same time, because it's a legal requirement, they also offer you the opportunity to do a variance. And so, we're going to apply for a variance, so that way we can create accessibility within the Swan Pond Trails, still meet all the standards, and still potentially get grants, if we need to get grants, to be able to fund it, to bring it up to a high level. So, it feels like a little breakthrough, because meanwhile, we've just been going around in circles and nothing's been getting done. And that's it. Thank you.
But you've actually done an awful lot of work on that, and it's a wonderful resource. It's underutilized.
Yes, very much so.
The efforts are appreciated for sure.
Very much so. Thank you.
And just for me, I'm just going to remind people, Monday night, come to town meeting. You know, make sure your voices are heard. Personally, doesn't matter to me what side of the issue you're on. It's more important for me to have you. Be well-informed, build informed decision, and on all the articles that are before you, and just come. And again, you've got lots to talk about. There's thirty-one articles here, but a lot of them, as you saw tonight, we'll be passing over. So, we have a budget that's tight and priorities that have been established, and come and support the efforts of all the volunteers that are here and all the boards, committees, and commissions, and voice your opinion. Have your, raise your hand, excuse me, use the clicker quicker, and have your vote count. But please come, again, at seven o'clock, uh, Monday evening, next Monday. Alright. Minutes. Review and approve, May nineteenth, open session. Do we have a motion? You do somewhere, yeah. Lot of paper, huh?
Number twelve? Okay, there you go. Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Seconded by Mr. Wallner. Any discussion on accepting the regular session minutes for May nineteenth? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Next order of business, excuse me, you have had several requests of the board to sell town-owned land.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to recuse myself and reserve the right to speak as a resident. Thank you.
So, the request for town-owned, sell town-owned land, um, we got fourteen parcels?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fourteen or fifteen, I think. Eight or nine requests for a total of fourteen or fifteen parcels of land. The normal procedure here now is that the board has had these requests from residents or people who are looking to buy parcels of town-owned land. We generally take them up annually, but there isn't any set schedule, but it's generally annually. Um, so, we have a request before us, and the normal procedure now is for the board to instruct the administration to run it through the review process. And the review process goes through all the boards, towns, committees, and commissions to see if there's a, an intended use for these parcels or any reason why we should not put them up and available for sale through, again, generally the auction process. So, this is just the first step, to put these things through the process, run through the administrative process. And again, that usually takes a couple of months anyway, to run the gamut, maybe longer. So, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, through you, we have prepared a motion that would vote to initiate the process for these parcels. And just for the benefit of those who may be watching or present here this evening, these requests do go back a few years. There was a period of time where we were not really considering the requests as we were tied up in the general land area minimum or GLAM calculation related to Twenty Elm Street, past that at this point in time. So, these do go back a few years, and they've come in from multiple people. Some people looking for multiple parcels. So, this is a process that we need to go through. We ask folks who have already been patient and who were sort of quick to give us some answers last week when we reached out to some of you to explain why you were making the request. Thank you for your quick response. It is going to take us some time to get through these, but they are going to go through a process that'll be reviewed over the coming weeks and months. And as information's available, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
And I would just like the record to show, appropriately show, that Select Board Member Massey has recused himself and actually left the room. So, it's important that the record show, the minutes show that he did recuse himself and left the room. So, do we have a motion?
We do. Mr. Chairman, I move to conduct an evaluation of the town's needs for the following town-owned parcels, for which your request to purchase has been received in accordance with bylaw, Chapter Five, Section Twenty-five B. Eight Auburn Road, Ninety-One Burrows Road, Three Carpenter Drive, Fourteen Carriage Way, Three Colonial Hill, Nine Grant Terrace, Two Highland Terrace, Four Highland Terrace, Two Lincoln Street, Three Twenty-two Main Street, Nine Padley Road, Eighteen Quimby Road, Nineteen Quimby Road, Twenty Quimby Road, Zero Railroad Avenue, and Twelve Stevens Road.
Seconded, motion made, started by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's four in favor, one. Absolutely. Mr. Massey recused himself. If he's out of the hallway, you can tell him he can come back in. Next order of business is to sign and ratify the memorandum of agreement between North Running Library Staff Association, Local Forty-nine, twenty-eight, MLSA, AFT, Messengers, AFL-CIO.
I got it.
So, to vote and approve and sign the memorandum of agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town and the North Running Library Association for the period of time beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Sir, second.
Second.
How about a member of the negotiating team making the second?
Oh.
Alright.
Oh, second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Studo. Alright, Mr. Gilberto, you want to just fill us in here?
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the town and its library employees. Covers the fiscal year that is ending on June thirtieth, so fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Uh, is generally in line with the agreements that we have reached with our other bargaining units for a similar time period. It does include some reforms. It doesn't include a market adjustment for our department head-level positions in the library. Um, and was ratified by the, um, union by last week and before the select board for a final ratification and signature this evening.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Next order of business, North Running Firefighters Local, eighteen-fifty-seven IAFF, vote to approve and sign the integrated agreement. Mrs. Moran?
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the integrated contract between the town of North Running, the town and the North Running Firefighters Local, One Eight-five-seven, for the period of time beginning July twenty, July first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Seconded by Mr. Wallner.
Oh, I shouldn't.
No, your fire.
It doesn't matter who mistakes it.
Your fire.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Gilberto?
Through you, a little bit different than the last vote. This is simply integrating a collective bargaining agreement that was already reached with the firefighters' union and approved last year, into, integrating those changes into the overall dozens of pages of the actual collective bargaining agreement itself. So, not affording any new increases or any additional time or any other changes other than incorporating what has already been agreed to into a master document.
Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, unanimous. Next one is a review, discuss bylaws, policies regarding carnivals, fairs, exhibitions, or parades, as we said, the request of Mr. Massey back in April. Will you put it forward? Flora's yours.
You wanted to put it on the agenda.
Pardon me?
You wanted to put it on the agenda.
No, you requested that you put it on the agenda. I have the email from here for April seventeenth. I brought it up on the roll of the new business, but, so...
Yeah, I've already said my point. But on May fifteenth, I mentioned you wanted to put it on the agenda.
But what was your point? Again, you asked for us, the board, to look at it and consider it, so...
And then you said you wanted to put it on the agenda.
And I said I would put it on the agenda for you, yes.
I made my stance.
What is it? You don't want to discuss it?
No, I said I made my stance, but if you want, I can read it again. Is that what you want?
I want to know what you want the board to consider, that's all.
Sure. There is a parade that is happening on a Sunday, which, as I mentioned to you all, we were all sworn in to uphold the bylaws of North Running. So, that would not be upholding the bylaws of North Running. There, what I'd like to happen is I'd like to set a precedent for future parades. As I mentioned, anyone at this point could hold the town liable or hold the town accountable to say, you have set a precedent that anyone can have a parade at any time, not pay permits, not pay police details. All I'm asking is for them to pay our police details. Third is a select board policy that Mr. Gilberto forwarded me. And the select board policy requires the select board to approve these parades in some fashion. But most importantly, this event is in a public space, marketed as a family-friendly event. This event is going to have drag queens, which are maybe inappropriate for public land. These are people that if they're going to perform on public property in front of children, then I would ask that they get courted. That's as simple as that.
I'll just make some initial comments, and then open up to the rest of the board. First of all, and I know that the town administrator, in relation to, you know, is this a parade or is it a procession, and is, you know, is it a carnival? And how do the bylaws apply? We'll address that first. First of all, the event that you're referring to is... First of all, in relation to the, um, the event that you're referring to, the police department is determining that this is more of a procession. It's not a parade. We're not closing any streets. And that it would be handled in a similar fashion as they handle funerals and stuff. But again, the town administrator, maybe you can elaborate as to what the chief said and how he considers what this particular event is and similar types of events, of events.
Sure, happy to speak to it. And I think what was catching everyone's attention is that there is a flyer that identifies the event as a parade. When we discussed what actually happens with the vehicles that are involved, they gather and they travel through town in a procession, no different than a funeral procession for which the North Running Police Department normally provides an on-duty officer to escort travel, which is what happens in this case at this event each year and has been the case for the past few years. And talking with the chief is consistent with how he would handle any other type of procession. I am not aware of any intention to change, you know, that. I don't believe there's any need or desire or request to close a public way. So, talking with the chief, his feeling is that the department assisting the event as a procession is the appropriate response, despite the self-identified word as a parade. Functionally, how it ends up operating is as a procession.
Yeah, so all I'm asking is for them to pay for our police officers and...
There's no additional pay. These are duty officers he's using. It's not, it's not an additional detail. There's no additional cost incurred.
I'm just asking for the parade organizers to pay for that detail.
Would you be asking the same thing for the Veterans Affairs Committee for the Memorial Day Parade?
That's a town parade, Steve. This is a private...
It's a Veterans Event Committee.
Okay. An agent of the town, a committee of the town. Again, so you just asked me. So, um, that is a town event, Steve, where town of North Running has the opportunity. Why would, it's like, it's like coming out of my right pocket and putting it in my left pocket. There's no difference. I don't want people to think that they can use our police details for anything. And what I'm asking...
This is not a police detail.
I'm sorry. Are you defending that you don't want to take extra revenue for people using our resources?
No, I'm defending the practices of the police department and the use of resources for, for public purpose.
For...
For public purpose.
Town purposes versus private purpose.
No, these are residents of a community.
If you were to block off a street, you'd get a police detail for construction. You'd pay for that detail. You'd pay the four-hour minimum, and you'd move on.
This is not the same, and this is not what the police chief is identifying it as, and he's not concerned about it.
I'm not asking the police chief. I'm asking this board, who determines revenue and expenses.
And again, there's no additional expenses being incurred by the town. Zero.
This is not a, this is not a private event.
This is a private event.
We just read a proclamation that the town supports the LGBTQ community. And they have come in front of us for five years.
Correct. We've talked about this, Mr. Wallner. At the proclamation that you read.
Let Mr. Wallner finish. Let Mr. Wallner finish, please. Let him finish, please. Let him finish the comment.
This is embraced by the town, and the town, and we have many events that are, are similar in nature.
Like what?
So, we don't, we don't ask for, please, there's no permit required. The permit has been given by the permission of the board.
Whoa.
That's right.
Anyway, so...
So, this is very much a public-town event, not a private event. And so, it falls underneath that type of stuff.
We have other events where people are having, you know, walks along the sidewalk, you know, and to raise money for a private individual who might have some sort of a medical illness or raise awareness for a cause, whether it be autism or things of that nature, that take place all the time. And again, we don't charge them, and I wouldn't expect that we would be charging them, you know, to walk along public ways, so long as they're not closing down public streets. And again, the police department doesn't have to incur any additional costs, so...
They don't have to incur any additional costs, but this is where the town can say, we can get our money recouped for those services that we rendered to a private parade.
We're paying it anyway. But there's no money spent. It's already being spent anyway.
Yes.
So, you're going to double-dip on the taxpayers, saying, okay, you pay for their salaries. They're already here. They already got the cruises on the street, and let's charge them again.
No, you, you pay for what you want. You pay for what you want. I, I feel like...
And again, we don't do for funeral processions. We don't do for other processions. Mr. Studo?
No, I'm sorry. I'm not done. Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Gilberto, has the select board ever granted a permit to anything?
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has a written permit?
We receive applications for all sorts of licenses and permits every year. I mean, I don't understand the question. Yes, we issue permits.
True.
I mean, again, what type of permit?
That's a good permit. Um, yeah, my, I, my only thought with children there, I, I want these performers to be courted. Does anyone...
Are there any other, first of all, I was going to, excuse me.
No, but you do it for any coach?
Excuse me, excuse me. Please. Alright. I wanted to resolve the issue.
I heard some feelings tonight.
What's that?
I said I heard some feelings tonight. That's okay.
You heard some feelings tonight. Well, it hurt more than feelings, I think. So, okay, if I might. You heard some feelings tonight. Well, it hurt more than feelings, I think. So, okay, if I might. I was going to reserve these comments after we talked about the other issues, but let's just jump ahead to the issues. First of all, you know, you're requesting cores of these particular performers or individuals. Are you requesting cores of anybody else or for any other events in town that deal with children? No, you're singling this group of people out because... Excuse me, you're singling this group of people out. You're stereotyping them with no statistical data that indicates that these individuals have any more proclivity toward your concern for children than anybody else in this community. You're singling them out. You're stereotyping.
You're trying to make it a hate thing? It's not...
Excuse me. No, it might not be hate. It may be ignorance.
What?
I said it may be ignorance. I mean, I'm not saying it's hate. But again, it's unethical to be singling these people out based upon whatever your fears and concerns might be by stereotyping these people when there's nothing statistically...
Where's the stereotype?
What's that?
Where's the stereotype?
Where's the...
You're making that up, Mr. Chair.
I'm not making it up. You're the one who made the request.
Time out. If you were to go into the high school, if you were to go into the high school, the middle school, any school...
Let me finish. You had your say. Let me react. Excuse me.
Okay. Any public property with children, coaching.
Excuse me. Excuse me. You had your say. Let me say mine. Then other people have their... So again, your inference is stereotyping these people.
You could tell when to defend another quarry. There's an issue. Okay.
With no statistical data, you're suggesting no other quarries. You're suggesting... Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Going to...
You're suggesting no other quarries for any other group of people or any other events that come in town. You know, to me, this is a waste of time. It's legally perilous. We're talking about freedom of speech, all the rest. And I think you should leave your issues at the door.
Freedom of speech.
I think you should leave your issues at the door.
Yes, expression.
No.
You know, these people are no threat.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask you to get the crowd under control so you and I can have a conversation.
I want to... Mr. Studo, you have a comment?
Yeah. What do you think it would take to get cushioned amusements to put the carnival at the surface of a park like they do in Wakefield? Since we're going to talk about that, why don't we talk about the lack of having the carnival?
I'm just saying.
That's it. That's my comment.
Mr. Warren?
Well, I'm curious, through you, Mr. Chairman, what's the purpose of having a quarry for the performers?
So...
I mean, generally speaking, I'm sorry, you need a quarry form as well, you know, if you have an extended unsupervised contact with minors to whom you're not related. You have one, I have one. But these are performers. They're like stage performers. So, you know, we're not coring the people who are marching in the parade as minute men. There were children in the parade marching, but they were not... There was no direct interaction. So, you know, people who are performing on stage, and you take your children to the performances, they're not being cored as part of their performance. If someone was leaving their children with folks they didn't know, personally, I think that's a terrible parental decision. These people are not being asked to supervise children without the parents present. If the parents are choosing to take their children to this event, presumably, the parents have thought that through. And I think we should let the parents parent. You know, quarry checks are cumbersome. They're fairly expensive, and they take a while to go through. You know, it takes... You have to go through the bureaucracy. I just feel like requesting quarry checks for performances that on public land or otherwise will be done not with... Without supervision of parents is kind of an overreach. I think we should let the parents decide whether or not they're bringing their kids. And if they do, let the parental judgment dictate what their children see.
Yeah, so my thoughts are that if you want to go change a light bulb in a school, you need to get cored.
No, I...
If you want to coach a... You asked me. I don't know what the reasons is. So, if you were a coach, baseball team, soccer team, sixteen years old, down to two, you have to get cored. Right? So, you've got parents there. They're watching. High school, you've got teachers. You've got everyone's quarry in a school. Full of children, public property. Excuse me. So, I don't know why I'm getting so much pushback on... Maybe the... Time out. The most simplistic question, the most simplistic...
And you're being discriminatory. That's why. And you know you are.
Please, 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 please.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask you to get it under control.
Please.
Thank you.
Get it under control. You have no decorum. And you want us to have decorum? You have no decorum.
Mr. Leary? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please hold your comments.
Thank you. So, while a select few people may be insulted or heard, this is me looking after something that comes across public property. We are select board members. That comes in our jurisdiction. So, my recommendation to this board is to have these performers drag queen because they are for the children and they are half-naked. And I think... Let's grow. We all know they are. So...
So, what are the underage, the minors that you're requesting drive around in golf carts?
Mr. Chairman?
Served later on public property in town. The girls, should the girls...
We get a quarter of a girl.
All right, girl, girls.
Mr. Chairman.
Please, ladies. Cheesy. Please, little decorum. And let the board deliberate. Let the board deliberate. And again, hold your comments for outside of room, please. All right. I'm sorry. See?
Time out.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Warren?
I understand that everyone who has direct contact with children has to be cored. Someone who's going into the public school to change a light bulb will be in a place that is designed for children. Therefore, they should be cored. I think someone who is coming to a public park may or may not interrupt the children. And I think we should leave it to the parents on what they think is appropriate.
So...
I have a question for you, Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey, through the chair, please. Through the chair. But we had an event last year. We had a... Excuse me. I have...
So, people, Mr. Chair, can just throw jabs and I can't respond? Is that the goal?
Excuse me. I have a question for you. We had...
Because I certainly think that's your goal.
We had an event last Veterans Day, which was fantastic. It involved children sitting down on a blanket and being read a story by a person on our Veterans Events Committee. Should that person be cored? Should that person be cored?
I don't think it hurts. Because you know why?
You didn't request it then.
I don't think it hurts.
So, what's triggering this?
I'll take anything. You can cory everyone. I don't think it hurts. You know what that does is it brings a peace of mind to the Town of North Reading.
I don't think the Town of North Reading has...
I don't know what Mrs. Marin's talking about, but very hard and very hard. It takes like one day. And it takes about two minutes to follow.
I don't think the Town of North Reading is overly concerned with this matter. I think we're spending way too much time on it right now, and I think we should even entertain the thought of it, and I think we should move on.
Per your request, it was only a challenge.
No, it wasn't. It was your request.
May 5th, check the records.
It's entirely up to the board, but I personally am all set with this. I think it doesn't warrant any further discussion or consideration. I think it's an insult.
I think your position is an insult to the LGBTQ community and our community at large. Yes, it's not... No, my turn.
I have a family member here.
Mr. Wallner has the floor.
Yes.
Come on, guys. It's almost Tuesday.
Let's just face it. We should... By your request, we should all be cored checked because we have children coming in front of us. Always.
Yeah, of course.
Everybody who should appear...
I'm already cored.
Yeah, you are because you're a coach.
Yeah.
Okay.
You would be fine. You'd pass, right? So, fill it out.
It's not a question of if I pass or not. And everybody who appears at the gazebo should be cored checked.
That's not how that works.
Well, you're right. That isn't how it works. And that's the difference.
No, you don't cory check other parents.
Okay, so they're performing at the gazebo. What's the difference? They're performers at the gazebo. These are family entertainment and...
It's like contractors coming into a public property.
I don't think it is.
Or it's me volunteering the approach.
Unless there's any objection from members of the board. Is any suggestion other than Mr. Massey's to take any action on this? There's a second for the action that he's suggesting. We'll discuss it and we'll vote on it. If not, we'll move on.
We should move on. This is sad.
I do have a comment. I think, one, we should move on. But, two, I think, Mr. Massey, you should let the parents parent. When you have children of your own to parent, you should have an opinion. Until then, I think you should withhold it. It's insulting to the parents.
Oh, okay.
It is. I have young children, and I don't want your opinion on how to parent them.
Oh, okay.
Please keep it to yourself.
I have needs too, and I have nephews. Does that mean I can't have an opinion or no? Because I don't have children, I can't get an opinion on...
So, you are a parent. I think you should let the parents parent.
The only times you spoke today, Mrs. Marin, is go at me. Come up with your own.
As a parent of a two-year-old who woke up at 3:30, I've been up eighteen and a half hours.
I guess I just want to say that I don't have a lot to say.
No, 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 no. Jody, Jody, no. There's no public comment this evening. This is for the board to deliberate.
All right. I just think it would be good for queer kids to hear someone who voted against this because they've heard a lot of really terrible things from men. So, I think it would be good for them to hear poor people say that they don't hate their community.
We just said it's time to move on. It doesn't... It's not worthy of consideration.
They have to eat them every single day. They don't get to move on. See, we just do the next thing.
Again, I think I'm in agreement with Mr. Wallner that this is an insult, and we'll move on. So, next one is a board member liaison assignments. You've all received your liaison assignments, and I appreciate your willingness to step up and take on the tasks for the general public's information. Members of the board take on anywhere from eight to fifteen different liaison assignments. And you have responsibilities of communicating regularly with these boards, committees, and commissions and bring it back to the board, help facilitate information between the administration and these boards, committees, and commissions. And I hope that the public has a good appreciation for, again, the volunteers that sit up here and provide the services free of charge. No raises for us. And again, I appreciate the board members' cooperation in formulating these. Just as an aside, a couple of you have a couple of things coming up quickly. Mobile Home Rent Control Board has a public hearing on the Perry Park thing, I think, in a couple of days.
I don't know.
You'll be informed of it. And then Recreation, I think, is a... Our LUC is looking to do ribbon cutting for... What is it?
Kid Spot.
Kid Spot, yeah. Kid Spot coming up on the 12th. So, either yourself, Mrs. Warren, or representative of the vice chairman of the board, I will be out of state. Can attend that. That's been a tremendous undertaking by Parks and Recreation, and LUC, and everybody else, and all the people who built it thirty years ago. It'd be nice to have a representative there. So, with some of these liaison assignments, it requires a vote of the board to ratify the appointments by the chair, capital improvement planning committee, economic development committee, facilities master plan committee, fire station building committee, and taxation aid committee for the waiver of policy. So, I believe, Mr. Warren, you have some motions?
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments on these liaison assignments.
Sure.
So, when I started last year, I was given four as a new member. Everyone else had about fourteen or fifteen. I had four. Maybe I thought that, ah, that's a little weird. Or maybe I thought that, no, I'm just a new guy. I get it. I was told, I'm just a new guy. That's okay. That's fine. I slowly got into select board, right? That's okay. That's good. You ask any single one of those boards or committees, I was present at every single meeting. I was very involved. I did site visits. I did everything I could. So, I think, in my opinion, these committees really appreciate the effort that I'm putting in. So, with that, I was a little shocked to see that Catherine had ten and I had eight. So, I've volunteered, as you know, multiple times throughout the year to take additional liaison assignments away from Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Studo, knowing that they're getting very busy. I know Mr. Wallner had some conflicts with some boards that I offered to take up as well. So, I'd like to be able to add a couple more to my plate. And actually, I'd like to take away one from my plate. The one I'd like to take away is the Mobile Home Rent Control Board. I think I just walked away with a little bit of a sour taste for what you did. I tried to get on it so much that I got rejected. Actually, you waited, 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 and then I got rejected.
You got rejected. Someone got appointed.
I understand. But you and I know, and that's fine. But one thing I'd like to do is remove my liaison assignment from the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, put it back onto you. Or maybe Miss Marin would be great to jump in. Vincenzo could jump in. Mr. Wallner could jump in. The ones I want to add are, more importantly, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and the Council on Aging. The reason is, is because Council on Aging is, I think, I've done some good work and created a good relationship with the seniors here in town. I've created a great relationship with Kim Manzelli. I've created a great relationship with members of the Council on Aging. And that's something that I can go to every single meeting. And I would be a great representative. Most importantly to me is the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Probably more or less the reason why I wanted to be the vice chair was because of this specific committee. But I'd like to highlight my experience in my industry compared to, sorry, Mr. Studo and Mr. Wallner. If either one of you are happy to give up one of those appointments, I think I could be a critical, very important piece for that committee. That would help a lot.
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious if something changed. So, capital meets daytime, no negotiation, sometimes multiple. But I think the reason last year, certain committees, when I was chair, were not assigned you is because you made it very clear that you had very limited daytime availability. I just want to say that. I don't know if something changed.
I think this is a passion. I think all the volunteers I'm doing now, it's mostly going to be worth it if you put me in this. And I'm not saying put me in. I mean, if I have the opportunity to be in it... First of all, I want to point out the fact that I was told for the longest time that the CIPC is always the chair and the vice chair. That clearly is not...
Can I please correct that? From the time I was on the board, it has always been, and you can go back, it was always the chair and vice chair.
I trust that.
Yeah. So, by what I mean is, I just, again...
I trust that, and I believe that. This is the first year then that we would be changing.
No, it's not the first year because, again, you look back at history, and that's not always been the case. So, again, you've been here for a year. So, I understand from your perspective, you may think that.
Yep.
And again, the other thing is, is that the chair makes the appointments. Provided you an opportunity to talk about liaison assignments, and you walked out. So, if you want to have the public discussion, I'm not interested in engaging with you any further in public discussion. I've had to talk with you privately about things. Liaison assignments have been made. If you don't want something that I gave to you, just let me know, and I'll assign it to somebody else. So, if you'd like seven, we're going to have seven. You don't want the rent control board? That's fine. Give it to somebody else. So, what we have before us now is some motions to ratify the appointments by the chair.
Mr. Chair.
For various committees. That's what it is.
Mr. Chairman, that's pretty rude.
Pretty... No, what's rude is what's taking place over that side, but that's okay. I can take it. So...
Mr. Chairman, give me a shot here, will you?
Well, you've had plenty of shots, plenty of opportunities.
And have you asked the Fire Station Building Committee how I'm doing?
Are you on it?
What?
What appointment do you have?
Fire Station Building Committee?
Oh, okay.
No, I understand that.
Okay. So, what are you complaining about? You're complaining about something you've been given.
Give me a shot here. The reason I'm asking is because last year, when we went over liaison assignments, Mr. Chair, the chair at the time allowed us to openly discuss the liaison assignments. And if people maybe couldn't make it or couldn't do it, I'm offering more volunteer time for things that are my expertise. And I'm asking you, do you really believe that Mr. Wallner or Mr. Studo are more qualified than me to be on that committee?
Yes, I've served with him for the past year on it. Excellent, tributing member. Mr. Wallner, absolutely.
They're both tremendous. I'm not insulting them.
Yes, you are.
I'm not insulting them. I'm highlighting what I do for a living.
And what I'm highlighting to you is that the appointments that I make are a reflection on me, and I'm very comfortable with the choices I've made.
No, Mr. Chair, even when we had our discussion...
I have most confidence that each and every member of this board can take on the task. If you don't want the task, let me know, and we'll take it away and get it to someone else.
Steve, you're being rude. You're being like dictatorish.
That's what the chair actually is.
You're power hungry. It's...
A power hungry for what?
You are a power hungry.
It is the pay.
Steve, please, I ask you.
Pretty soon, you know, there'll be a parade in my honor, like a, whatever, choose something else that's taking place in DC. King for a day, anyway. Motions, Mrs. Moran?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Wallner and Mr. Studo to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for terms to expire May fifth, twenty twenty six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pull my plug. Pull my plug. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any exceptions? Unanimous. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Studo, the boarding member, to the Economic Development Committee for term to expire May fifth, twenty twenty six.
Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. Mrs. Moran?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Massey to the Facilities Master Plan Committee for a term to expire May fifth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. Please let the record show that twelve oh seven, Mr. Massey exited the meeting. Next motion?
I'm sorry, do I record that?
Yes.
Good?
I, I don't. Do I record the?
No, no, this is more for, that's, it's more for the, the minutes will show that Mr. Massey left the meeting, not you.
I, I, I didn't know.
You're not taking the minutes, you're just making the motions. Okay. Next motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Massey to the Fire Station Building Committee for a term to expire May fifth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to say no.
No, you don't. All those in favor, please say aye.
Hold on, Mr. Stu, Mr. Massey's absent, Mr. Wallner, it's, it's an a.
He's an a. Alright, so it's four zero, absent, Mr. Massey's absent. Alright, next one, Taxation Aid Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. Wallner to the Taxation Aid Committee for a term to expire May fifth, twenty twenty six, and to waive select board policy three point seven.
Mr. Studo, seconds?
Second, yes.
Alright.
Boy, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Just as a way of discussion, there's a select board policy that states that we probably shouldn't be serving on some boards, committees, and commissions. We're waiving policy because Mr. Wallner's yeoman's efforts in the taxation aid committee in bringing relief to our seniors and other people has been well documented, and he's deserving of reappointment to this committee. So, we're asking to waive the policy to him. So, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous, with Mr. Massey missing. Town Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, through you, two items, first was in the written report that I was notified by the State Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance that they are pursuing the potential opportunities for development of property located at seventy-three Lowell Road, the intersection of Lowell Road and North Street. They're seeking the town's partnership and potential use for housing at this location under a particular law that would allow for development. Certainly appreciate the outreach for potential partnership, but we have expressed, we have initially expressed, and I provided some written information in writing for the board, that the parcel is very challenging for use, for development. It's a very tight parcel with, at a difficult location with a lot of flood plain on it that will probably make any potential reuse very difficult. Talking to the chairman, I think it might make sense for the board to consider a formal response to this request and this notice to be voted on at its next meeting that would memorialize that response. But I did want the board to be made aware of that, as that was something that came through a believing correspondence or will come through in correspondence. Secondly, unfortunately, we did not receive any bidders for Nine Mill Street after having conducted a couple of information meetings and an open house. So, we'll be talking with Town Council, and we'll be back before the board with a new strategy with regard to the property added upcoming meeting, if not the next meeting, then the meeting after, with an eye towards conveying that property, so. And that concludes my comments for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. One more motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second. Second by Mr. Wallner. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous, Mr. Massey absent. Thank you all for sticking with us for the evening.